Okay, everyone, welcome to our council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here, there you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, first thing I just wanted to read, we had a First Responders' Day this past Saturday. I think we've been doing that for about seven years, helping out the Rotary Club sponsors it. And we go and honor our police, fire, and EMS, help them make breakfast for them. And it's been a pretty successful event over the last seven years. So I just wanted to read the proclamation that the town presented to them. First responders, both career and volunteer, include law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, 9/11 dispatchers, search and rescue personnel, who bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect families, visitors, and businesses. First responders do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others. And their commitment to continue training, skill enhancement, and interagency cooperation make them prepared to serve, protect, and rescue other citizens 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. First responders are a vital part of every community, maintaining safety and order in times of crisis, and volunteering in our schools and community organizations. Acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens provide first responders the needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous uncertain situations they face every day. So we just, again, the town council in town declared that First Responders' Day on Saturday, and it was a great event. We had a lot of volunteers from the town helping out to honor them. So just wanted to pass that along to you folks. So now we're at an audience of citizens. So I got a list, we'll go with the signup list first, and then if folks, you know, anyone else wants to speak, they're welcome, and certainly we'll go to online after that. If you would, if you could keep your, you know, time down to five minutes or so, that would be great, somewhere around there. We don't, we don't hold you to that, but, you know, there's a lot of people that want to speak tonight, which is, which is great, we want to get everybody in. Dennis Kern, first up on the list. Name and, of course, name and address when you folks get up here.
May I?
Huh? Yes, 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 turn it around. Yes, indeed.
To look at whom you're speaking.
Yeah.
Dennis Kern, 57 Cider Mill Road, Kensington, but in Berlin.
Welcome.
I am speaking on behalf of the Berlin Land Trust tonight. I am the president of the Land Trust, and we want to point out several items on the agenda that we think are significant. The first one is we understand that on the Fontanella, the Fontanella piece on the Chamberlain Highway, that in fact, the Oswald grant was made, in fact, the Berlin Land Trust has given a grant of $20,000 for that project. However, we also understand that the cost of the survey has exceeded expectations. So we know that the landowner is being asked to contribute, to take a little bit less in terms of the consideration, but we ask the town to do what it really should do in this context, which is to increase the amount, to increase the amount purchased this property by allocating enough money to pay for the additional costs, the unexpected costs. This is a very important piece of property. It's visible from the Chamberlain Highway, very visible, and it connects to hundreds of other acres within that open space area. So please, consider that and make that additional requisition, please. The other item is a simple transfer from the Lamentation Mountain Disaster Recovery Account to be used for a state recreational trails grant for Lamentation Mountain. Now, you know Lamentation Mountain is crisscrossed with trails. You know that it had a very serious fire there last year. It's in a significant recreation area. The master plan for trails would help organize the trails. There's the blue trail going through, the Land Trust has constructed a half a mile trail up there. But organization is helpful, and that's what the trail people will be working on, you know, as they investigate the mountain. Three towns, three cities or towns own this mountain, basically, Meriden, Middletown, and Berlin. The mountain is shared by three towns. The Land Trust has approximately 160 acres on that mountain that we own. The town, the city of Middletown has land up there, the city of Meriden has land up there, the state park, there's a state park up there, and there's a number of private owners. The point is, this is very important from a passive recreation point of view. Very important area, hikers are there fairly frequently, and the view from that, from the northern part of that mountain, you could see down to Sleeping Giant and up into Massachusetts. So it's really quite a view. The whole central valley is available to look at from the top of Lamentation Mountain. So we ask you to consider, it's a simple transfer, I think, we ask you to consider making that transfer to allow this study to be done. The study is being funded by the state and the capital region organization as well. So I think it makes sense for us to participate, just like, just like it makes sense with regard to the Fontanella piece, because you have two grants in place. And so it makes sense to just follow, you know, follow it to completion. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dennis. I know Ray, Ray, we have a show and tell later. Ray, could we just maybe take the sewer pipe, is that the?
Water pipe.
Water pipe, but it's not the most attractive looking piece up there for you folks to stand next to, not that it smells or anything, but let's just, we'll look at it later. You're welcome to stay and look at it closely if you'd like later. Thanks. Yeah, that's some of the stuff that's under our ground in town, that's, that's in East Berlin, yeah, that we've got to work on that. So on to our list, Ruth, is it Lavaro? Laver, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry if I murder any names, I apologize for that in advance. Welcome.
I'm Ruth Laro, I'm at 1414 Rod Road in Kensington. And I'm looking here, I see that Tina is on the.
Yeah.
And I am here as a member of the Berlin. I go there, I enjoy some of the activities there. And of course, what was circulating around is the policy about visitors hosting events at. And gave me pause, and gave many people near center pause. This policy appears to limit what types of civic groups will be allowed to offer services. The policy isn't very specific or well thought out, and I'm wondering if it is actually even necessary. Does not describe who will be in charge of deciding who can visit the center, and it doesn't describe now there will be a strict vetting process, or if there will be an appeals process denied. Seriously, you don't need all of this if a group is simply going to want to sponsor lunch. Seems like too much. We've never needed a restrictive process before, and I do not think we need it.
Oh, yeah, hold on, I'm sorry, folks can't hear. Is it on? Can we turn the volume up any, maybe? Oh, is there maybe?
I'm sorry. I'm almost done. Okay, the town manager, who I spoke with at a senior center event there, told me that other towns are doing this, and so we must align with what they do, which to me wasn't a very compelling argument. I too watched the video of the previous town council meeting, and things got out of hand a little bit heated, and for this reason, I'm asking that the policy be removed to calm things down, lower the temperature here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I wanted to say, as an example, I was just handed this, this is a very nice little calendar from the Plainville. And they very nicely have here Democratic coffee and cookies, it could be Republican coffee and cookies. It's a time, it's a date, cost is free, join us, talk to representatives, don't talk to the representatives. I mean, this is very political, you know, and seem to be okay with it. Everybody seems to be, you know, fine with having, they don't want to go talk to the Democrats, they'll probably have another day to talk to the Republicans or something. Not a big deal, you know, just calm things down and try and, you know, sort of not divide us any further, bring us together.
Thank you. Just as a note, this policy is not in effect yet, we haven't voted it in yet, so just so you know, that's not, that's not voted, we're still working on it. There were some tweaks to it, we haven't really reviewed it yet from the last meeting, so it's not, it's not voted on yet, it is not in place. Next person on the list, Greg Starr.
So I'm Greg Starr, 59 Hudson Street, Berlin, Connecticut. You'll have to be here while I, a lot of stuff here. So I'm going to be speaking on Grassroots Berlin. Just about my background, I've been a resident in town for 29 years. As a father of six, grandfather of eight, I'm deeply invested in our community. I'm also a veteran, a coach, and a Republican. In addition to these roles, I'm also an active and proud member of Grassroots Berlin. It has come to my attention that there is a misconception about Grassroots Berlin. Some may view us as propagandists, notion perpetrated by the recent comments to Charlie's remarks with the mayor, which included laughter, dismissive language about propaganda and negative terms. While the use of the words is concerning, what is truly disappointing is the tone and implication behind the labeling us as propagandists. I'd like to take the opportunity to explain who we are. Grassroots Berlin is a bipartisan group, which includes Republicans, Democrats, and unaffiliated voters. Our members are like-minded individuals who share the commitment to do good things for the community. We strive to make a positive contribution that brings our town together. Within our group, we debate issues and consider potential projects. As our approach is honest conversation, active listening, consensus building to identify projects that would be meaningful to Berlin. We generally enjoy working together and find collaboration in our efforts. This year, Grassroots has completed several projects. To further inform you about the community and town council, I've got some packets for you guys to look at that detail our completed projects, and also includes our Grassroots Berlin survey. I request these packets also be added to the official record. I'll hand them out.
Down. Yeah, I just keep going over there. Now, we need.
I'm good, how are you? Good, nice to meet you.
Good to see me too.
Thank you.
One more, Greg.
Oh, no.
Yes, I'd love to read it, please. Yeah, we got one, we passed them all down. We're good. Thank you.
All right. So every time I ever done a presentation, I hand these things out beforehand, what do people do, what they're doing?
Yeah, I would like throw it, yeah, of course.
All right, so we are, I kind of said that before, but basically bipartisan community organization dedicated to bringing people together to shape a stronger, more connected town. We believe in the power of conversation, collaboration, civic participation to create meaningful and lasting change, always with the goal of creating a better Berlin for everyone. Think big, act local. So some of the projects that we completed, we raised close to $1,000 for four nonprofits, for Mountains to King Day, Orion T. Lee Foundation, Safe Harbor of Subington, Make it Habitat for Humanity, and Food Share. Earth Week, Earth Day was on a Tuesday, I think, we cleaned up Ragged Mountain, we cleaned up 16 bags of garbage that were left at the entrance, and somebody on Sunday posted they found 16 bags of garbage, how terrible that was, but Steve knew about it, that's where he told us to put them. He also, he also found homeless encampment there that was abandoned. And according to Steve, it took 10 man-hours to get that additional stuff out, they had to go, and we thought they could go in with a front loader and pack it up. There were tents, there were chairs, there were tarps, it was all heavy stuff, so at least we got that cleaned up too.
Needles?
Needles, oh, needles, needles, okay. For the upbeat picnic, we donated a basket, it was titled The Taste of Berlin, with local restaurants donating close to 200 bucks for the kids. Pride Month, we held rock painting at Veterans' gazebo. We did a walk and talk at Pistol Creek. Part of the, part of what we're trying to do is to get the community connected, getting people that don't know each other to talk. The other piece of that was, was we asked for a donation for the food pantry. The last, well, the last thing we did was the ICE and Immigration Presentation at the community center. The speaker was a constitutional attorney, a human rights scholar, and a state senator. And I was there, and it was very meaningful. And I thought it was impactful, too. I also, at the end, included the grassroots survey. And we did the survey to help, help understand, you know, the priorities of the people by taking a short, meaningful survey, because we felt that the feedback of the residents would be important as to what they thought the future of Berlin should be or could be, what they liked, what they didn't like, ideas for the future. I mean, if we're, we're thinking about what we're doing as a community, it's not only today, it's not only tomorrow, it's for the future, it's for my kids and my grandkids, everybody's kids. So I put in there, you'll see it at the end, it's a seven-page, Mark, you have it, I gave it to you when we were at the Berlin picnic, okay?
Gotcha.
And you did download it. And I'll just, and the last page is, together we can do great things. The only thing I would say about that was, is everybody does what they do. I was actually hoping that maybe you would have called, and maybe we could have figured out a way to, to, you know, to really get that, get this out to more, more people, to have it be more meaningful, because feedback is important, you know? We can say that we think, you know, but, you know, we need to hear from the people, right? And we do have, we do have that. All right. Well, that's that, we're not done. So I have coaching and community values. As coaches, we emphasize the value of respect towards teammates, opposing teams, referees, the game itself. We also highlight the importance of representing ourselves as good citizens of Berlin and why it's important. If coaches or players make an inappropriate play or a comment, a yellow card will be given. If the action occurs again, or the red, or another's, or decision, a red card will be given. You know, recently, F-bombs were awarded a red card. So in my infinite wisdom, you know, what should we give propagandists, folks, other than the F-word? Clever recovery, by the way. Oh, no. Oh. I have a red card. I have a yellow card. Charlie, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, a yellow card is a warning intended for, to encourage improvement and discourse.
Excuse me, sir, you addressed me directly, may I respond? Is that all right?
Yes, yeah.
I did not use the F-word. So I'm flattered that folks work so hard, folks is the word. Folks worked hard enough to edit the recording and put a different word in there. They must really think I'm worthwhile to spend that much time on it. I've heard the recording.
Listen, I.
I listened to the video, I think you ought to listen to the video that recorded by the town. I did not use that word, and I'm not going to defend myself about it, and you're not my judge, you can keep your card, thank you.
I wasn't going to give it to you.
Thank you.
But anyway, but it's the point more than that, I didn't really say, you know, I didn't say you said the F-bomb, however, if you, if you listen to the tape, I listen to it a lot, it does sound like that. However, it could be folks, I'll take your word for it, okay?
Thank you.
But, listen, the bottom line is, we're in a community where we really need to work together, okay? Calling people propagandists is not the answer, okay? Putting one side against the other is not the way to make, is not the answer, okay? Just let me finish, all right? So, you know, I appreciate the time, but I just wanted to call it out, because I think it's a little bit over the edge, right? To call a group like this propagandist, okay? We are like-minded people that are working together for the good of the community. It's that simple.
Thank you. May I respond to that? My comment was saying, I didn't think the folks at the senior center would be influenced by propaganda, wasn't referring to any group, I was referring to anyone that might go there and present their position. If you take personal insult to that, you may consider what you're talking about propaganda. I don't. I was referring to general information by any group, either side.
Well, thank you for your clarification, but all people don't take it that way, that's the point, okay?
They can take it any way they want.
Then you need to consider what the end result is when you say things, that's all. Anyway. So I just have a few observations, and I'm done.
Time is giving you a little bit more, that's okay, I get it.
You get more than five minutes, what are you, listen, rules are rules, it's going to be broken, all right, listen.
Yes.
So Mayor Mark?
Yes.
This is about your complaint about transparency?
Yes.
Criticizing the BOE retreat and potential expenses without knowing the details.
Yes.
All right. Oh, it's my dog.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I'm telling you, I gotta shut this thing off.
Yeah.
Cool. And so the other one is, you know, the other piece to it, though, that I thought was disconcerting is that, about transparency, is that you kind of beat around the bush when banning Grassroots Berlin from the senior center, but it does come out at the end, what happened, okay? Leadership. All right, so basically, I'm big on, on giving people their, their, do, do creds. And it seems that with the way that this new proposed policy is written, is that it appears that you don't trust the town employees so much, so that you're having the town manager provide extensive oversight with approvals for sponsorship presentations at the senior center, and it appears that the town library may also be included, I don't know.
They already have one, they've had one, I think they've had that policy for years, but.
Okay.
I believe, anyway.
So I also understand that the library is different, most state libraries are, okay? And they have their own rules. That's why most libraries will take anybody who's speaking anywhere, anytime. Our leadership is recognizing town employees for exceptional performance. I'm only mentioning this because I think this is what happened. I know what happened for the first part. Tina Doyle, the director of the senior center, won the Naismith Institute of Senior Centers, or the senior center did, Programs for Excellence Award for Health and Wellness in 2025, for inspiring kindness and gratitude. I know the town posted on their website, and maybe on Berlin Talks and Berlin Buzz, but this is me, you know, she never received recognition, from what I understand, at the employees appreciation lunch, right? I just think that's something cool to do. All right? I mean, Mayor Mark, when, years ago, when we opened, I think we did it at Percival, and we, we gave letters of appreciation for the, for the town, or Steve, or Jen, you were there, we cut the ribbon for having a walkway that was handicapped accessible, right? And you even mentioned to me, we got to do something like that. Listen, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal for the people that work here, to understand that what they do is important, and whether it's just a little notification at a group meeting appears, I think that's pretty cool. So if we can do stuff like that.
We do.
I think it would be cool.
We do that.
In closing, okay, in closing, in closing. Our actions and words are important, particularly from town leadership. We are better than this, we need to be better for the future of Berlin. I'm also hopeful that you have a better understanding of Grassroots Berlin and our purpose and commitment. And frankly, we hope to work together with you guys to make Berlin better. I mean, that's what it's all about. I mean, you know, we are where we are, we need to move forward, we need to figure out what that vision is going to be, and we need to get there together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, no, I lost my, oh, there's my K.
Next on the list, Greg Prentice.
Welcome. Thank you, good evening, folks. My name's Greg Prentice, I live at 1697 Chamberlain Highway. I've lived in Berlin for over 20 years, about 17 years in Worthington Ridge, and now on the Chamberlain Highway. I'm an independent voter and a member of Grassroots Berlin. It's a great group. We get together, discuss topics of common interest impacting the town, and occasionally work together on small projects to help our community. I don't understand this resistance to our civic engagement with other people in the town, or prohibiting our access to common use facilities that are taxpayer-funded, like the senior center. We are individual taxpayers, just trying to engage our fellow citizens. Many of our members are seniors. We were planning to sponsor an event at the senior center, and now a new policy is being proposed that aims to exclude groups like us, for political reasons. We talk about political topics? Yes. We talk about community issues. Taxes are political. Town budget is political. School funding is political. Protecting our children is political. Zoning is political. The future of the senior center is political. Senior housing is political. The future of the community center is political. Town pools, and whether we get an indoor pool for seniors, and our high school swim team are political. Many seniors care about these issues, so political discussions may occur at any time. Civic engagement and active discourse are how we can work through problems together, find common ground, and build political consensus on solutions. The more our average citizens are involved in these discussions, at the community center, at the senior center, or during casual coffee meetings like the ones we regularly have for Grassroots Berlin, then the more likely we are to find political consensus with solutions that broadly serve the needs of our townspeople. I will close by saying, I think town citizens should have more freedom of access to reserved space at common use facilities, particularly for political topics. It is healthier than venting online. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next. Dave, is it Dave James, is it? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Glasses, need the glasses. My name is David James, and I live at 1863 Chamberlain Highway in Kensington. I moved there, actually, I lived there with, with my wife, we moved here. We moved here only three years ago. We were looking for a quieter situation to live in than our previous dwelling, and we found it. And before I go into, this is very short. I just I just wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and we also very much appreciate, you know, the work you guys do. We think that Kensington so far is a great place, is a great place to live, and we appreciate the work you do, to keep it that way. My point is that I share that same goal as far as keeping this place a desirable place to live. And which is why I I got involved with the grassroots Berlin people in two thousand twenty four. As soon as I got here, I heard about them, and I had a few discussions with Cornell and some other people, and I could see that there was a place where I could begin to exchange ideas and perhaps get my hands into things a little bit quicker than coming up through the ranks in the city government. So. And I could see that it was an organization that was comprised of people that were concerned and motivated, and they were very welcoming of a variety of views, and that's what I was looking for. So all this is to say that I found it disheartening while I was watching the September sixteenth council meeting, and I saw the group characterized as, I mean, we can parse words and semantics, but it's pretty clear they were being characterized as as propagandists. But I found I found that offensive, and also that I was kind of stunned that our our presence at the senior center would be seen as unconstructive. One thing that I was encouraged by, perhaps it wasn't meant to be encouraging, but hear the deputy mayor say that he thinks that the people at the senior center are capable of discerning what's important, and he's not afraid of, did say that, not afraid of people presenting there was encouraging to me because I believe the same thing. So I guess in short, I believe that grassroots Berlin can be incorporated into this community constructively, and I would really like to see going forward in the future that we're able to work together and do some some good work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Lana McCarthy. Yeah, yeah, there you go. There we go. Gotcha.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Laura McCarthy, and I live at two fifty eight Alling Street. I'm the co-founder of Grassroots Berlin, a community organization that has accomplished a great deal in our first year. Grassroots Berlin was founded as a space where residents could talk. Talk respect. Every Saturday, got to tell you, every Saturday, eight thirty at Provisions, same scene is happening there. So we're respectfully about local, state, and national issues, and then turn those conversations into meaningful action. Our group meets Saturday mornings at eight thirty at Provisions Cafe, and our goal is to build understanding, civic engagement, and strengthen our community. In fact, my daughter was inspired by this group to come and ask you all about your flag policy and expanding the flag policy to include the pride flag in June. And at that time, the the council applauded my efforts. That's why I was both surprised and deeply concerned to view and take in the extreme measures or the suspicion that this group was being viewed with. It's evident and clearly recorded in the town council meetings that the current senior center policy and proposed new programming reporting structure are really designed in direct response to our group's activities. These actions, along with the comments made at last month's meeting, do not reflect the spirit of open dialogue our town should represent. In fact, it may have exposed the town to potential legal liability, which nobody wants to pursue. So tonight I want to urge the council to rescind the unnecessary senior center policy. Our group exists to bring people together, not divide them. We believe in community transparency and respect, and I hope this council will do the same.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Cornell.
Cornell Budria, one fifteen Skinner Road. I'm co-founder, along with my friend Laura, Grassroots Berlin. As has been very well expressed, we're very much a bipartisan group of individuals that want nothing more than to get people off the internet and to literally touch grass and to talk to one another, to get out there and discuss issues. That was the seed crystal for this group back in two thousand twenty four. Coffee meetups. Me on Saturday. Get out of bed. Get there early. Coffee is freshest when you get there first. Talk about issues. That matters. Like Greg Prentice said, there is too much of a sense of toxicity that exists with online discussion. That breaks down immediately the second that you show up in person and you talk to people directly. Completely erase this barrier of, I don't know what it is. I'm not a psychologist. I can't possibly describe why it is. Somebody would be online and say the worst thing ever, but when you get there in person, you find common ground with somebody you would never imagine finding common ground with. And that's what grassroots Berlin is all about. It is the most open space in and of itself as a concept to bring people together. So when I heard September sixteenth that we were the subject or the whole reason this senior center policy was created, and you can shake your head.
Not true, but that's okay.
Go to the tape.
I'll hold my comments till later.
Mentioned probably half a dozen times.
You were mentioned, but you weren't the reason for it.
It was also a candidate that wanted to do trivia night, and he got banned as well. That's not right. That's not right. Can't put those walls up. Not good. It's not healthy. It's not healthy. We did nothing to justify in block. This policy that's in place stands to reason to continue to persist that block. And seniors of all people, the only thing that we wanted to do was to host bingo. We weren't we weren't pulling punches. We were pulling balls to call numbers. It's about the most nonpartisan thing you could do. For some reason, that amongst whatever milieu of things, it completely triggered this council to want to do what they're doing. And again, Mark, you can shake your head, but the the record shows on the sixteenth, they're very adamant that these types of things should not happen at the senior center. Don't have to be that way. We're all good people. We want to talk to each other. We want to get into the senior center literally to host bingo. And we have a series of other engagements that we're planning to do where we're going to do a seminar on elder mental health. Is that exclusive?
No. I don't think he read the policy, but that's okay.
The policy. It's not a matter of the policy. It's the motivation for the policy.
And it's not in place yet anyway, but.
Well, maybe it shouldn't be at all.
Maybe it won't be.
Thing to do is to rescind it.
But we didn't.
Senior Center has operated for a long time with no policy. Is not necessary to have this policy, should be rescinded. I think that in and of itself would be the most bipartisan gesture this council could do. That's my piece.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Ryan Malloy. Ryan, we haven't seen you for a while. We miss you.
I'll try to be under five minutes. I think I'm going to be. I'm going to hit on two things. So obviously, part of grassroots as well. I'm going to start with Bright Feed. So there's been some emails flying. I got you. Literally said, I wasn't going to do that.
Even though we know you.
Ryan Malloy, eighty four Juniper Lane. Also lived in Berlin my entire life, thirty eight years, left for a little bit, Marine Combat Veteran, very proud of that. One company here in town. The company started as a free company before it was even a company to help people who needed help financially and due to physical implications during COVID. And then I really enjoyed it. My entire family has a history. My dad owned a landscaping company. Both of my uncles own landscaping companies and have since retired. I love it. My dad has passed, but I know he looks down on me every day. I'm just giving you the context, right? I am one of the good guys. I don't just say that. I try to carry myself that way. I will give the shirt off my back for anybody. But the Bright Feed scenario, I think you guys saw that, right? I fought for what was right. I'm big on right, wrong. With Bright Feeds, we still do not have the Health Department data, and I think we're all commiserating at this point in that, right?
Yes.
I think it's ridiculous. But I wanted to get this on record here. It's ridiculous for so many reasons, right? This potentially could have impacted many of our health. I know somebody went straight away who is going through chemotherapy right now for breast cancer. I'm not saying Bright Feeds caused that, but could these things have been contributing factors? The fact that we've gone a year plus at this point without formal readout, any potential penalties. This company continues to capitalize in our town, potentially off our well being. I, and that was the whole reason they wouldn't make good on things originally. They knew what they needed to do, but said they needed to build capital at our expense to do what they needed to do. Most utterly ridiculous thing I've ever heard, but here we are, right? So we need to get the Health Department data done. I know you're.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, please do.
Can you hear me? Um, I actually did speak on Public Health today because I too have had it. It's been months, and you're absolutely right. They need to come up, and they should have the results by now. They do have the results, and they're putting together a package that they have assured me that my office will receive by the end of next week. I did ask them for that in writing because I can't believe anything out of their mouths, quite honestly. So by this time next week, fingers crossed, they should be typing up whatever that report is that we've been waiting for, and we should have some answers by the end of the week.
Fantastic. That's why I said we're all together. I'd like to have humility when I can have it. Now, recently, there have been some reports on smell, which I'll continue to escalate to Jake at the DEP. He is very responsive to that. There was a bunch of still getting, as of even today, reports from late last week. The problem is it's so sporadic and so infrequent, but that by the time that we get it to whoever needs it, gone, right? It's dissipated. So it puts us at a really big disadvantage. And then the the recent one, and Ryan has an email from me this morning on this, is from Adrian on the on the sound. It seems like something early in the week. I've said this, I think I have it in writing in some of those emails. For some reason, sometimes on Sundays, Mondays, and sometimes into Tuesdays, I don't know if something is more intensive in their process, it's louder, right? And then we're getting into the whole noise ordinance, black and white versus where they're residing. They've curbed the Hertz, twenty eight Hertz thing, very appreciative for that. But then I think we're getting into semantics on what's acceptable and what's not. And from my end, it's not, nothing's acceptable overnight. Nobody should be woken up. So if we need to curtail a noise ordinance to allow people to sleep, and that means this business can't operate overnight again, that's what it means, right? If they can curb the sound, then they should be allowed to stay. This is my personal opinion, but I think it's ridiculous that at this point, anybody is still being woken up or kept up overnight for a company who's claiming to solve world hunger or animal hunger. Like, it's it's just so utterly ridiculous to three years later. So I'd ask, here's my ask. We please revisit the noise ordinance so that Ryan has some sort of power here. This isn't attacking Bright Feeds. People should be allowed to sleep. This town is a nice town. Right?
Yeah.
Pay good money for your homes, lots of taxes. We need to be able to sleep.
So if you could, what would be helpful for us, what we will do, because you know, we still have, we have that sound engineer firm, you know, acoustics that that we have retained basically for this reason. If you have the specific days and times, like you said, the beginning of the week, if you have, if you say, I don't know if you just sent that to you in the email, but that way we can, we can have them come out and do some measurements. Like we said, we always want to follow up with that. So yeah, definitely give us that, and we'll get them go follow up.
I will. I've debated hiring them or another company because I don't know if you guys remember, but I had actually.
Contacted them first, right? Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
Or to do this independently.
Yeah.
The problem that I have with that, it's like four to five grand for me to do it.
Yeah. No, that's why.
Not as much the money as it's infrequent. So if I pay four grand and it's not happening.
We're going to do it, Ryan. Yeah, no, but I mean, we'll, it's.
Big target, and that's where.
Yes. That's why we we keep keep them, you know, so we know this could occur. We were afraid of this happening.
And the other thing.
We'll get them out there.
Coming down. There's been long speculation that when those leaves come down, that acts as a natural barrier. Right? So now we're coming into winter. And another good point that somebody brought up late last year is ever source had changed all those poles that used to be wood out of metal. Is that radiating through, you know, our neighborhood? So all speculation, but I, you know, anyways, that's it from that end.
Yeah.
For grassroots, I'm going to be pretty quick. So obviously, everybody said this is a bipartisan group. I'll be quite honest, I have not always agreed with some of the folks in the group. I've never once been objectified, not once. I've been challenged on my opinions, but I've never been demeaned ever, right? That's the best way I could say it. If that's not America, I don't know what is, right? That's what I fought for, right? The comments heard in the last meeting for me, specifically around immigration, with a state immigration lawyer speaking in a public building, is pretty ironic, right? That's where she should be speaking, right? And I went as a conservative, and I'll be quite honest, there was a lot I didn't agree with her on. I said that Cornell earned me say it after, but I respected her, and I learned something from it. I learned that there's specific keywords that certain immigrants are using that puts them in a protected class. So I actually learned something. That's why I went there. That's what it's all about. Freedom of speech and freedom of elections is the bedrock of this country and why millions have flocked here from foreign nations, including our ancestors. I'm just going to call a spade a spade. I'm going to close with this. What I learned in the Bright Feed situation and what I've learned with grassroots is the staunch conservatives and the staunch liberals in this town go at it way too much. Right? And this is just my right and wrong side coming in. When it starts to impact objectives such as seniors, I have a problem with that. But it impacts anything, I have a problem. We need as adults to take a step back, look at what's actually happening and what it's impacting. There is so much good you guys are doing. Want to highlight that. This isn't a, we'll put on all you. You guys do great work, but anytime we start to impact the objectives, I think we've crossed the line. And we as leaders need to recognize that. We need to step back, realize our words, our positions. Sorry to point at you. But our positions have responsibilities with them. And I'm going to close with that, right? I I I at my company, I have Tina Knows, I think she's on the line. I have been begging to donate for my company. At this point, it would have been thousands of dollars. I haven't been able to, you know? So and from my end, what's bothering me is the seniors are impacted. I have tons of money. I'll take it. I can't do it, right? So I'm going to close with that. It just shouldn't, it shouldn't impact the objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Joanne.
Joanna Jellicoe Stetson, one eighty eight Stony Mill Lane in the East Village. I've served this town and community in various capacities as an economic development commissioner, board of ed member, town counselor, and member of the Democratic Town Committee. The service of which I am most proud is not in an appointed or elected role, but rather my membership on this wonderful bipartisan civic based groups, group grassroots Berlin, which was co-founded by two of the most generous persons I know, Cornell Budria and Laura McCarthy. They are generous of self, of spirit, of time, of effort, which is so genuine and resonates because they have succeeded in recruiting like minded people of all political affiliations, which is the foundation of this group. And not an easy task during these troublesome and contentious times. GRB is comprised of Republicans, Democrats, unaffiliateds, people who lean right, left, conservative, moderate, centrist, with the only goals being the coordination and implementation of actions that benefit and enrich the lives of all Berlin residents. All. Children, adults, seniors, again, regardless of. Again, regardless of political affiliation, sexual identity, religious belief or ideology, socioeconomic status, level of education, all people. It is so fulfilling to work alongside my GRB co-members and be able to discuss sensitive and sometimes divisive issues thoughtfully and respectfully and unite and collaborate as a group to create meaningful change. Please understand that regardless of the outcome of this meeting or any attempts by certain members of our local government to suppress Grassroots Berlin, we are going nowhere. We will continue with our mission because it is a good one, it is a kind one, it is a noble one, and so deeply vital at this point in our American history.
Thank you. Justin Lamro. Hey, hey, how are you? How are you? Hey.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of the Town Council, friends and neighbors. So I'm Justin Lamro. I live at 34 Castlewood Drive. I grew up in Berlin. I am an alumni at Berlin Public Schools. I am a special needs individual, a former member of upbeat. And growing up, I attended church at St. Paul's every week with my family. I know this town and I know the people of this town. Tonight, I am here as an affiliate of Grassroots Berlin to discuss the recent discourse or recent commentary regarding our organization and the senior center policy. Like many of my colleagues here, I watched the video of the last town council meeting. And like them, I can sense misconception regarding the aims of our group and language that could be received as decisive or dismissive. I'm not gonna talk about the deputy mayor saying a word that would have gotten most of us a bar of soap in our mouths as kids. He did attempt to clarify his remarks, which I'm sure everyone appreciates. Thank you, sir, for doing that. But regardless of what was intended, it evidently was not what most people heard. As my colleagues have demonstrated tonight, and contrary to popular belief, we are not a partisan organization. We're not just a bunch of class clowns or agitators. We, and we are not the word that most of us heard. We have registered Democrats, registered Republicans, and registered independents. Our members fall on all ends of the political spectrum and are united by a genuine concern for members of the community and a sincere desire to make Berlin a better place. Not a political agenda that conspires against any one individual on this council we're standing up here tonight. The group, as many of my colleagues have noted, gets together every Saturday morning for coffee, 8:30 a.m. at Provisions. I'll admit, I've only gone a couple times because I'm not a morning person. But we talk meaningfully about pertinent state and local issues. We have speaking engagements on other dates to discuss these issues. We bring in elected officials and experts in various fields to educate members of the community so they understand what is going on both in our town and in the world. Certain members of the town council made clear in their words and actions that they are willing to go beyond members of our group in targeting the organization. They are seeking to exclude grassroots from holding events in the senior center, curtailing civic engagement, and stifling public discourse. Mayor Mark, you have made clear that said policy has not been implementing it, it has not been implemented yet, excuse me. And you have urged us to read it, which most of us have. But you see, it's not the policy itself, it's the motivation behind it. We're talking about censorship. We're talking about political smearing. And saddest of all, making our seniors pay the price by curtailing their access to public discourse and civic engagement. Whether that policy has been implemented yet or not, it is unacceptable. And that's putting it lightly. This is the last thing we should be doing, folks. We need to work together. We are a small town. We're neighbors. Mayor Mark, I live down the street from you. I see you walking your dog all the time. It's very cute, by the way. And my mom waves to you every morning.
As is your dog. Very cute, yes.
And my mom waves to you every morning when you go for your run as she's leaving for work to take care of sick kids. At the Berlin Fair, I saw Republican committee volunteers laughing at the same jokes and warmly greeting Democratic committee volunteers. I saw my former CCD teacher, who's a Republican and a staunch Trump voter, give a hug to Councilman Peter Rosso, who's a Democrat and evidently couldn't be here tonight. On the way in here, I saw my friend Greg and Councilwoman Veitch talking it up like old friends on the way in here. And I made you, Mayor Mark, laugh with a quip about our presence. As you can see, it was a very educated guess that we're all here. But the toxicity online and the language used at the last meeting simply does not reflect that. It makes me sad that this is what my generation is inheriting. I'm evidently the youngest person here, perhaps by a mile, and I want to be able-
Right. Hey, wait a minute here, wait.
Offense, offense. I know you're all 25. I'm only 23, don't worry. But anyhow, my point is, I don't want, if I do have kids and I raise them in town, I don't want them to be surrounded by the kind of language that we heard or believed to have heard a few weeks ago. And now from what I can tell, the senior center is being used as a pawn with this policy. I want you to understand that whatever comes of this, we're not going anywhere. As my friend and colleague Joanne said, we're gonna continue fighting for what we believe in. We're gonna continue fighting to make Berlin a better place. And we're gonna work with everyone, whether they're on the far, whether they're on the left or the right, a D or an R, or an I. Make sure that Berlin can be a better place for everyone. And we'll find a way to do it, whatever constraints are put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Charles Wilber, Charles.
Bring this up a little. Good evening, council members. Mayor Kaczynski.
Hello.
Friends, Romans fellow contributor. Charles Wilber, 80 Club Drive, Kensington. I will try to be brief. I am a member of Berlin Grassroots as well. Everything they said is true. I am a Democrat. Some people were giving their affiliations. That's also true. There are a few things that stuck out and kind of made their way through what everyone was saying that really do tie together nicely. Justin, you just described the senior centers being used as a pawn. And I think that's one good way to think about the situation right now. It's certainly a stark image. Greg Prentis earlier was commenting on the, how everything ends up being political. I think that was pretty eloquent, well said. And I think if you kind of mash those metaphors together, the senior center, if not a pawn, is a symbol of a town presence, a group of citizens in the town that have the same rights as anybody else. And this is not my metaphor, but laws that grant rights or limit them can be viewed as one of two pictures, either a jar of marbles or a block of cheese. Anybody ever heard that one before? It either starts empty and then you place in ones that you want anyone to have. But for the most part, you're starting with empty and adding. The other is Swiss cheese. You start with full. And then there are holes carved backs, carved backs for certain restrictions that are appropriate, necessary, I think necessary and proper might appear in a document we all know well, or at least maybe should. Freedoms of speech and assembly are in the First Amendment and they are the Swiss cheese. People have the right to speak unrestricted at the top and then carve out little bits as is appropriate, necessary, and proper, not based on viewpoint and certainly not based on perceptions about the recipients. Facts and data and best practices should guide that. Not ambiguous references to what is a charity? Everyone knows what charity is, but what is it? I don't know. A lot of people were talking about words that they may have misheard at the previous council meeting. And one set of words I heard very clearly were, "I'm surprised we let her speak in a town building." I didn't listen to it. It is a direct quote, unedited. Eric Kaczynski, do you believe when I say I heard you speak those words very clearly?
I don't know who we were talking about, honestly.
That's just it. It was the constitutional law professor from Quinnipiac and a state senator.
Yes. Well, I'll have some more on that after, but yes.
Fair enough.
Related to her, yes, I did say that because I did hear some things, yes.
To tie my metaphor back in, and not mine originally, but "I'm surprised we let her speak." It sounds like an empty jar where we, whoever that might have been referring to, gets to place marbles in, you get to speak. Okay, maybe you do. But it certainly didn't start with the idea of a freedom of speech and assembly. Even used the phrase "in a town building." And as I think, hold on, Ryan, no longer in the room. Ryan said that's exactly where this should be happening, in a town building. That's exactly where these freedoms should be demonstrated and exercised. So as you said at the last meeting there, times are different now for different reasons. But the differences have to be productive and the reasons have to be valid. I don't know when the policy is set to go into effect. I know you said it's not in effect, so everyone talking that way shouldn't think of it in those terms. But it looks like it's item number two on new business, approve senior center event sponsorship policy. So whether or not it gets approved tonight, it's certainly being contemplated tonight. And I, just to make sure I don't go too, too long, let me ask an important question. I'll get out of your hair. Mayor, what, if not the Grassroots Berlin meeting, what did inspire the proposal for this sponsorship policy?
But I'll let the speakers finish and I will answer that question. It's a point that everyone has sort of missed, but I'll certainly enlighten you all.
Everyone does seem to have the same opinion, I think, a reasonable deduction that because of the proximity and time and then the granted vague comments made at the previous meeting. But it seemed very reasonable to deduce that the one begot the other. So we, I'm sure, all look forward to understanding exactly why a policy is coming forward. Thank you very much for the time, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Appreciate it.
For listening.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're done with the list, but that doesn't mean you can't speak. So anyone here would like to speak before we go to online? Anyone? We're good? One's going twice? Okay? And any hands raised online? Okay? Oh, that one, okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. I, I'll just say now, I mean, it's on the agenda. I'm not sure what we're gonna do. I mean, I think it's worth reconsidering and looking at it. But no one mentioned that, which I find interesting, that part of what prompted this and, you know, if I mischaracterized grassroots, then, you know, that's on me. And that's not right, but what brought this, I've had a lot of complaints over the last couple of years. I really haven't, I tried not to do too much about it. I, you know, it's hard to know what's said in different public buildings in town. But I have had a lot of seniors contact me. They're uncomfortable at the senior center and many groups, different folks that have been there, they're uncomfortable. And we all need to feel comfortable. I've heard that tonight. But we all don't at the senior center for some reason. I'm not really sure of that, why. I mean, I've had comments of why. And these folks don't want to come forward because they don't want to be ridiculed on, you know, social media and whatever else happens in our society today. And I heard comments about the lady who spoke at the library too. You know, so I have to take that to heart because we represent all the people. I'm just telling you, but I hear, I didn't hear the lady speak, but, right? But I still have to listen, like I'm listening to all of you, right? Do I only listen to certain people? I don't do that, of course. That's not right, as we've heard tonight. I've listened to everybody. So if people aren't uncomfortable in a town building especially, we gotta take a look at it. Why? I mean, you know, I'm not, I can't, I'm not at liberty to say they weren't uncomfortable with what was said. Things were said against, things were said against certain people in the town, different philosophies. I mean, you know, it depends on, I mean, you know, I have more specific information, but I cannot share it because they don't, they're not comfortable coming forward. So that's one of the reasons. Yeah, yes, sir. Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
My name is Mark. I'm your neighbor.
Yeah, yes.
You know who I am, right?
Yes. You have to come up, sir, if you wanna, you gotta, you gotta come up to the, one, one last speaker. Remember for second and third, but come on up, no, I know.
Just wanted to make a brief couple of comments.
Sure.
One comment, maybe.
Yes.
So I've been involved in-
Name and address.
R. Kirchner, 57 Castlewood Drive, Kensington section of Berlin.
There you go.
So I have been involved in organized labor for 40 years. Okay, have been present at run meetings, whatnot, okay? And alls I want to say is, when you're talking about folks that complain about things happening to senior center, you do understand the silent majority, that most people that are content with what's going on are not gonna reach out to you and tell you. Understand that, right?
I understand that, of course.
Right? 97, 98%, 99% of the people in a group that are happy with the way things go are not gonna tell you that unless you elicit that and you could do that. You could look for that kind of information. But the few people, I don't want to say the whiners are getting to you. But, you know, kind of take that under consideration. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sure. Of course, that's, that's stating the obvious, of course. I mean, I, I mean, I have people contact me every day, email, phone, you name it, in person, and have their opinions on anything we do in town. You know, people, some people may be upset because we bought a new fire truck. I don't, I mean, listen, here are all kinds of things, but a lot of things. But I have to listen to them. That's our job up here to listen to everybody in town. I don't mean that because 10 people don't want this bottle of water here and the other 19,000 want it, that the 10 went out. But all their opinions are important, at least to me, how I look at the town and how I act as the mayor. And I think that's pretty obvious how I've, you know, been on this council for 10 years and everyone gets to speak and I never silence anybody. Go to the Board of Ed meeting, they silence people after three minutes and shut off the mic. I would never do that. In fact, I've spoken to them about that. But I just find that terrible that these are taxpayers, moms and dads and kids. And the three-minute mark comes and they shut off the speaker, the microphone. I don't, I don't get that at all, but, so there's people that, you know, do have things to say that that's what I have to look into sometimes, you know? I have to look at it all. I mean, that's just how it is, like it or not. I don't know, you know, people that come and talk to me and tell me good or bad things, I don't always agree with them personally, but that's not my job personally. It's not my personal opinion. I have it and I'll express it up here, but we all vote together. And we all vote on many things up here. And, you know, as far as, I guess the other thing that disturbs me to hear quite a bit is the divisiveness in the town. I mean, I can only look at, yes, everybody has their own opinions. Everybody has different opinions about whatever the town does. Of course, we're all going to. We're human beings. But on this council right now, at least these last two years, I don't know, 90% or more of our votes are unanimous on what we do with the town. Republicans and Democrats working together for the town. And I always tell people that the local level, to me, there's no political issues here. Yes, I know things are political, of course. That's just our nature as human beings. But, I mean, as far as, you know, we're not worried about the border in Mexico. I mean, I'm worried about it as a citizen of the United States, but as a counselor here, I have no control over that. I have control over our budgets, our fire trucks, our police department, what the schools get, what everything else gets as a council member, one person on the council. So that's how I look at it. And that's how we've conducted this council as far as, as long as I've been here. And most of the time, we have had unanimous votes on most things we do in Berlin. Not everything. We don't always agree. We express our, you know, differences of opinions up here, I think, quite well, civilly and every, every other way. So that's how we run it, but I've got to listen to everybody. So that was a little bit of, you know, a little bit of a thought on why this was rolling around a little- So that was a little bit of, you know, a little bit of a thought on why this was rolling around a little bit to me. And I've heard it for a couple of years now, just different things. And again, whether they're credible or not, I mean, you know, it's hard to say sometimes when people tell you things. I try and get to the truth of it. It's hard to get to the truth of anything many times, but. Well, we have, we have, well, you know, it's, it's just something to look at, right? Because other towns do have it, towns have it. This is not stifling free speech that I consider doing that. We're just trying to see. I mean, to me, the way our society is going today, it's, it's, any town building to me, wherever it is, not just Berlin, anywhere, is subject to some issues. I mean, look, look around. I mean, look at the news. We've seen what, my God, has happened in our country in the last few years. It's not good. And it happens in public. I mean, I guess my best example of worrying about buildings is, and it's horrible, but, you know, we do need to just make sure it's safe. I mean, that's one of the issues, you know, just to make sure we know who's, who's there, that's all. I mean, certain groups that may want to go there, I mean, I, yeah, we should let everybody in a town building, just like we have a policy, we should let every flag be flown, and there's reasons why we didn't do that either. But we just have to be careful. I mean, when I lived in Virginia and worked in Washington DC, we could go walk down the street in the Capitol any day we wanted. No magnetometers. There were some Capitol police around. We could walk in there, talk around, go and see Congress, whatever we wanted to do. Go, go try and do it now. Talk about stifling free speech or, you know, but it's for a reason. After 9/11, you can't even get in the Capitol, right? Got to go to the visitor's center, got to get your congressman to get you invited in there, and even then it's tough to get a tour. So, you know, that there's reasons for that. We're not the US Capitol, but I'm just saying. We look at our town buildings and we have to, we have to keep them safe and we have to be open to everyone. Even if people are complaining and, you know, that's what they think, that's what they believe. If they don't like it, I try and accommodate everyone. That's the best I could tell you. I don't think this policy is that restrictive myself, but we haven't implemented it yet. We tweaked it from last time. We've had a lot of discussion on it. After tonight, we're going to have some more discussion. I would, you know, tell the council, I would not vote on this tonight. We got to discuss it some more, look at it more closely, no doubt, no doubt about that. But just look at the other side. You think, you think it's one big happy family in the senior center or any other building for instance in town? I mean, you can't come into a building and, and make people feel uncomfortable standing while paying your taxes. And, and, you know, I just want the community center to be a place where all our seniors are welcome and they're glad to be there. Yes, sir. One, one last comment. Yes, you got to come up. Yeah, please. Sure you do. Yes, you do. Yeah.
David James, 1860
It's another role, sorry. Yeah.
1863 Chamberlain Highway.
Yes.
At the risk of stating the obvious, one of the biggest problems in this country is people trying to please everyone. You can't please everyone.
That's true, too.
Got to use discernment.
I'm with you.
Someone, someone
Yeah.
Believe me, I go to meetings all the time. I was part of a board and people were at each other's sword all the time. But if you want to get something done,
Right.
You've got to, you, you, that's your job as a leader.
That's what I do.
Okay, well, you just said you got to include everyone.
The senior center, to me, is a special place. It's a little bit different than, than, you know, a pool in East Berlin. That's, that's important, and we made some decisions on that, which you get criticized for, and that's, we take that. That's why we're here.
Well, okay, there's seniors at the senior center. There's seniors all over this town.
Yeah.
Seniors, seniors at the senior center.
It's a town building.
It's a town building.
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
Didn't go to this last
Yeah.
talk by this woman. I did see her in Cheshire. They welcomed her with open arms at the Cheshire Library. That's a pretty conservative town, Cheshire.
Yeah, I'm with you. Yeah.
No problem.
That's great.
No problem, right? Some people didn't like it? Hey, I don't like everything I hear.
I'm with you.
What's the big deal?
I'm with you.
I don't get it. But I'm just saying, you got to be broad based. You can't exclude one group for some little group that's, I'm not going to imply this, but it may be your favorite group.
Yeah, yeah.
You, it's not a matter of what you favor and don't favor.
I agree, I agree with you, but on the point of grassroots, you are not excluded. I mean, the way the policy is written now, if we, if we pass it tonight, which I would urge we don't. But you're not excluded after November 4th for any group that, and if I mischaracterized you, I did, but. Yeah, it's about the, well, I mean, I think, I think it's more about the politics, but, but that's okay because we just heard politics. Well, three months, it was three, it's, I think it's in here three months before the election. We tried to keep any political groups other than, you know, we have our forum, but everybody's there, all the candidates are there. We've done that for many, many years, and the seniors can come or they don't have to come, right? They know if, if, yeah, well, I mean, maybe we shorten it. I don't know. Yeah. Yep. Have you scheduled, but, but I mean, yeah, I mean, but have you scheduled another event at the senior center after? Great. Why? Before the election. But it's not, yeah, I mean, that's, we're still kind of in a state of flux that we haven't passed it yet, but that's sort of what we've, till we pass it. Yeah, I'm with you.
Is this about motivations, about impunity, surrounding, what's going on?
Yeah.
And at 9/16, I do stand up.
Yeah, Kate will really yell at me if you don't, but, but, but you know what? Yeah, well, she'll, she'll yell at both of us. It's okay. But, well, I, I, it, I mean, it's a policy that other towns have too. I don't know why it's considered so divisive here.
That may be true, but there's also plenty of other towns that don't have such a policy.
Agreed.
Importantly, through this rigmarole to get to a policy, to a point where we're discussing a policy
Yeah.
that's almost really irrelevant, because the senior center has operated without this forever. I mean, the director, Tina's been amazing.
No doubt.
Being able to manage who comes through that door and she lets the powers that be know what's going on. So, I mean, that level of trust in and of itself, that's your policy.
Well, there's a lot of policies, policies in town that I guess we could say we don't need them. I mean, we trust the managers, but, I mean, we do trust them, of course, but sometimes you need a policy. So it's clear what, what is accepted, and it's not someone's opinion what should be let in there, and that leads back to the whole opinion thing. If, if you have a policy that's reasonable, if we got, if we got there yet with this, I don't know, then we know what is expected there, and there's no, there's no personal agenda. Now, I'm not saying by Tina, but by anybody in a town building, right? If, you know, Ryan, the town manager decides I'm going to let these people in town all and do what they want to do, we got a policy that covers certain things, so. And that's not, that's not unusual. I mean, I spent 30 years in the federal government, please. I mean, policies, if I talk policies, we could talk them, but.
We'll say that this policy, again,
No, I know you don't like it.
Innovations, that 90-day lockout.
Yeah.
Long time, a long time.
I, I
We'll just throw that out there.
I, I just, yeah. Yeah, no, I get it.
Put it on the calendar.
That's your opinion. Yeah, no, no, I get it, I get it. No, we're all entitled to our opinion, of course we are. One last time, yes, please. Yes, and that, and that, then we're going to have to wrap it up, folks. We got it.
Frank Prentice, 1697 Chamberlain Highway, guy.
Yeah.
The one thing I just want to say is you were talking about that you have to make decisions. The council has to make a decision.
Sure.
All together have to, you know, consider the facts and the information. You've got some information, you've got input, and you do want to listen to different points of view. That's what our group wants to do. We want to listen to different
And that's great. Yeah.
When it comes to making a decision, you have to look at what are the, what are the guidelines? What are the guiding principles? What are the guiding concepts for what you're doing? And we have one. It's called the First Amendment.
It is.
Okay, that is primarily the guiding thing that you'll be, that you'll be looking at as the basis for having organizations come there. We're not accosting people for going to the senior center. We're going there, having respectful discussion or engaging them or supporting bingo or something lighthearted. It's not like we're going there to try and, I mean, do some commercials on aluminum sign.
Oh, yes.
Going in to do something, you know, other thing that's crazy. It's the First Amendment. Just meeting with people, discussing, having open discourse. That's what we need. And that's the basis for your decisions on this, in at least my opinion. So, thank you.
Yes, I, I, I get you. I mean, I'm an attorney. I studied constitutional law in law school. Yeah. You know, folks, this is not bad. This is great. I, I don't know, I mean, some of you, you've been here before. I mean, you know, many of you have been here before. You know, people have been on the council, sitting in the audience. I want people to come to council meetings. When, when we have a council meeting, believe it or not, honestly, if it's empty out here, I'm disappointed. Because somebody's always got some gripe, let's face it, right? Somebody's got this or that, that they want to tell us or don't tell us, or happy or not happy. As the elected officials who represent all of you, we want to hear it. I mean, people think we don't want you to come and even if you yell at us a little bit, we're okay with that. So it's good that you're here. It's not a bad thing at all. George? No, I know. We're going to close it. We're going to close it. Yes, you, you certainly can. One, all right, I, sorry, one last, that's it. That's got to be it. That's got to be, I'm sorry. We got a whole agenda to do. That's the only reason. I would be happy to go home now with you folks and get out of here, but we're stuck. But we signed up for it, I guess.
George Miller, 1231 Orchard Road. So as I listen to everything, I, I have no issues with groups like this coming to the senior center, asking to come to the senior center. When we talk about free speech and when we don't want a policy or anything, I'm hearing, then we should let anybody come in, correct? Anybody who wants to come in. How about white supremists? How about Proud Boys? Can I, can I, can I speak? Well, I, can I speak? You know, there's a whole litany of things that I would not want these people there. And you, you never know what the new one's going to be. You may label it as hate speech, and it is. Is that identified anywhere for every single one of these types of groups that's going to come in? Personally, if my mother is over there, you know, if I was 20 years old and my mother was a senior citizen or whatever, I would want somebody at least running it through to make sure that it's not one of those groups. I think that's part of the reason why you have to have some policy. You can't just have no policy. I hope it's not going to be restrictive and groups like you would be welcomed with open arms. But to have no policy whatsoever leaves you open to having to allow any group that wants to come in to do anything they want to do until you figure out a way to exclude them. And that's what's happened in the past with a lot of these organizations. Thank you.
All right, thank you, George. So, listen, all, all great discussion. That's what we're here for. We're, we're glad to have you all here and I think that's it for our audience of citizens. Oh, no, please.
Shut it off. That's enough, Mark.
What's that? I think I did once. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That we could do it. Yeah. I mean, yeah, that's fine, of course. Yeah. Well, well, yeah, okay. We, we've had enough discussion. Let's not go down the rabbit hole. We're going down. But so, thank you all for coming. We, we appreciate it and we'll, we'll consider. Ah, it's going down here. It's going down on the table. We'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens and thank you all very much for coming, and we'll be talking about this a little bit more. Thank you so much. All right. Now, wow, we're only on page one of the agenda. That's, that's, that's good. We thank you folks for being here. Yes, it's excellent. What did I have seen? It was one thing, what was on the mayor's agenda? What did we talk about? One thing to say? I forgot. That's all right. We'll move on. Yeah. Something I wanted to tell everybody, but that's okay. So we'll move on to our consent agenda if we, if we could. We read all the, the different, how many, we got a lot of items on the consent agenda here. 14 items. I'm not going to read them all. If anybody has anything to say in any of them, but if not, we've read them ahead of time. We can take a motion, Charlie.
I move, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Hearing, and no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Right, so moved. Okay, on to our regular agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Our first agenda item today is a discussion, this is a discussion that the town has been having since I arrived here in the beginning of the year with the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority. And I have our economic development director, Chris Edge, here today, and, and he's going to introduce a special guest. We have the executive director of the CMDA here today to tell us a little bit about this program. And both Chris and myself thought that this was something that was worthwhile to bring forward to the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Hey, Ryan. Yes, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. Yes, so Connecticut Municipal Development Authority was actually put into legislation in 2019 by actually a former member of the legislature from here, Sarah Semowitz. It was recently put in place in 2024, particularly for those communities that have a transit hub. So opportunities potentially to tap into some state monies, but I will introduce David Coors, Executive Director of CMDA, to give you a little better idea on what it is and potentially that we can at least look and maybe how Berlin might fit in the mix.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I'll be brief. I know you've got a long agenda to I know, yeah, it's great. I mean, we don't usually get a crowd for my stuff, so. Well, thanks for being here. So, you know, I'll be brief, but happy to answer any questions folks have about kind of how we operate and what the next steps might be. So we are a quasi-public authority. As Chris said, we were established in legislation in 2019, but we were not funded until 2023 and we didn't commence operations until 2024. So we're very new. We've just been around for about 13 months. And our statutory purpose is to be a toolkit that can be mobilized in our partner municipalities to help them achieve their economic development and housing objectives in their downtowns or around their train stations. And so we can only work with communities that have an existing or planned train station or a walkable mixed-use downtown. Obviously, in Kensington, you have kind of an overlap of those two things. We have a $90 million capital authorization from the state to fund projects in our member municipalities. That funding can be used for projects that fall within one of several categories. You'll see there's a lot of overlap. We can fund technical assistance and capacity building to support our municipalities. We can fund transit-oriented development, development within walking distance of the train station. We can fund housing. We can fund building demolition or rehabilitation, or we can fund anything that falls under the category of development or redevelopment. So it's a very broad authorization to support infrastructure or directly to development. We expect the majority of our funding will go either to grants to municipalities for infrastructure or low-interest loans to developers to bring their projects to fruition. The way that you gain access to the funding is through a multi-step process. The first is to opt in by the local legislative body. At that point, there is no commitment. There is no obligation. It's merely an indication on behalf of the local elected officials that there's interest in working together so that we know we can start dedicating time and energy to working with you. Once a municipality opts in, we then start engaging with staff. And our statutory obligation is to look at your zoning just within one half a mile of the train station. So we don't look at the zoning throughout the whole municipality. I don't really care what's going on. And in the neighborhoods, it's just within the area within a half a mile of the station. And we certify whether or not your zoning is likely to substantially increase the number of housing units. I tell every community, don't get hung up on the word substantial. If you're allowing multifamily housing around the train station, it's going to be substantial relative to your existing, you know, home, you know, typologies. Likely is the important word. Is your zoning designed in a way that investors can come and implement your vision? We may certify your zoning as is. I haven't looked at it. We don't look at it until you opt in. It may be fine. Or we may have recommendations. If we have recommendations, they go to your zoning commission. We can't overrule zoning. We can't force them upon you. We don't usurp local control. That becomes the purview of your zoning commission. But if we make recommendations that we think are necessary for the zoning to come into compliance, then you would have to make them to take the next step. So if we either certify your zoning as is, or if we make recommendations that your zoning commission ultimately opts to take, then we move on to a memorandum of agreement with the chief executive officer, which I don't know if it's the mayor or the town manager, but. And then that establishes the development district, and that's basically the line on the map. That's the portion of the town that is then eligible for funding. And once the line on the map exists, then any municipal project therein that meets our requirements or any developer therein can apply to us directly for funding. Two more things and then I'll, I'll open it up to questions from you all. One is, you know, 90 million's a lot of money, but it's only going to go so far. So we think a lot about the ways in which we can add value to our member municipalities beyond direct funding. And the big ones are helping the market sites and helping with state permitting. And so a big purpose of ours is to help align the objectives of different state agencies and make sure that when you have a municipal vision and you've zoned for development, you're not getting hung up in the subsequent state permitting process. The final point that I'll make, just in terms of where we are, as I said, we started in August of 2024. Most of that year was Most of that year was getting the organization up and running. The earliest a municipality could have opted in was February of this year. We now have 26, maybe in the last couple minutes, 27 municipalities who have opted in. They're working through the process, working with us on zoning and strategy. Two of them have gotten to the stage of having a development district established. And so we'll now start getting funding applications in. And we would certainly welcome the opportunity to work with you all and happy to answer any que- questions you have.
Do I have one question?
Yeah, please.
Thanks for coming out. I think this is a great opportunity for municipalities, if you will. You said you've got 26 that you're currently working with. Are they and I know they have to be trans or anything, that kind of thing. So do you find it in the bigger cities that you
Ah, so it's, it's all over. Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. So it is a geographic mix, large, small, wealthy, not-so-wealthy, rail-oriented, not. In this immediate geography, so on the Hartford line, we have New Haven, obviously, Wallingford and Enfield. In your kind of portion of the state, we have Rocky Hill, Bristol, Plymouth, Plainville, New Britain. You know, that's kind of your immediate area and then they go from, you know, yeah, yeah, those are the ones in your area who have opted in so far. And others that we're talking to, obviously.
Your organization is described as a quasi-public state agency?
Yes.
What does quasi-public actually mean?
Yeah, sure. So it, it means that we are created by the state, but we are not the state. So I am not an employee of the State of Connecticut. I'm an employee of the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority. But we only exist because the legislature put us into being. And when it's structured, it's structured with a governance model. And so I answer to a board, which includes members of the governor's cabinet, gubernatorial appointees and legislative appointees from both the minority and, and majority party.
We have a couple water departments that started out like that.
Sorry, I don't get the joke, but.
Ah, that's all right. You don't wanna get it. And, yeah, it's taken.
There's about, I mean, just, just to kind of, there's about 15 or so quasi-publics in Connecticut. You know, everything from like the Airport Authority, Access Health CT to the Lottery Corporation. It's, it's any time where they want to create a vehicle for a public purpose, but want it
My, my point in asking is that private money and it's not, you're telling me.
It's not. It's, it's state-funded, correct. And then we will have a revolving fund as we loan funds out and get it back. We will function like a bank in that way, but the seed capital is state funds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the, the first part you said, looking at our zoning regulations, wha- what does that entail?
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we have an analysis that we go through and, you know, I, I guess the important point I would make, because we haven't looked at yours yet, but we're going through this with the municipalities. The important point I would make is we don't have a set density that you have to have. We don't have a set height limit that you have to have. There is not a, a, a criteria that each community has to correspond to or abide by. We look at your existing conditions. We look at your market. We look at your parcel sizes. We look at your zoning. And we try and identify whether or not there's a, there's just a, a critical challenge in there that a developer would have a difficult time overcoming. So I, I hope that answers the question. It's, it's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We're not coming in and saying, oh, you, you don't allow X height, so you don't check that box. But we may find something like a, the front setback will prevent buildings from be oriented to the sidewalk and encouraging walkability. Or we might find that there's a side yard requirement that makes the lot undevelopable. And we're just trying to identify those things.
Just in that dis- just in the TOD district?
Just in that area.
Okay.
So we sit down with staff once you opt in and figure out where we wanna focus in. And some communities that we work with have multiple rail stations and they say, no, no, we just want you to look at that one. We're not driving the decision on geography. You are.
Okay, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Folks?
Nothing? We're good?
Just one clerk.
Yes, sir.
If I understand, if I understood correctly, and I'm sorry, I've got a head cold, so. So you make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission? If, if we opt in, right? So you look at it and, you know, maybe you say it's fine. Maybe you make some recommendations. So let's say you make some recommendations and our planning and zoning says, you know what, we, we don't wanna do that. We wanna keep things where they are. Then that's it and there's no funding type of thing and both sides walk away and we're good. Just, I just wanted to understand, make sure.
Yeah, there's multiple, you know, there's multiple off-ramps would be the way that I would describe it, right? It's, it's up to you whether or not you opt in. If we have zoning recommendations, it's up to the zoning commission whether or not they take it. It's up to the chief elected official or chief executive officer, whether or not we enter into an MOA. It's up to you whether you ever apply for funds. It, it's optional at every step.
Okay.
But by having a train station, you're eligible.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So just for comparison's sake, CMDA was set up based upon the model of the Capital Region Development Authority. They've done a lot of projects in Hartford, East Hartford, and really what they've done is low-interest loans and others had made, have, projects have been made financially viable. That's really what the role has been of CRDA in Hartford. I know the Executive Director very well brought him into town. And it would be similar, which is to try to find that middle ground on maybe when it doesn't work. And again, my thought was, you're an eligible community. It makes sense to at least look at it. You being a bleeding body, have to begin the process, but I know I've known David for a while and he's a lot like me. He just is now working with 25 towns. So I appreciate the time tonight. Just wanna let you know that just so you had some comparison's sake on, on kind of what kind of things we're looking to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thanks. Okay. Moving on.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number two. This is a topic on our senior center sponsorship policy. I think we've discussed length earlier. I don't know if you wanna continue the conversation. We did, just so you know, we took the feedback from the council from the last meeting and updated the policy to reflect that. And you can see in your, your packet, you do have the updated policy with the changes that are, that are highlighted. So that is something for your consideration and, and discussion.
All right, folks, while we've certainly heard a lot about it tonight, and that's, that's fine, so my, my opinion would be just to look at this a little bit, a little bit more and see where we go. What do you, what do you, what do you all think? Yes, agreed. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, it's all good, yeah. We miss Peter not being here. Yeah, okay, so that's good. So, yeah, 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 he probably was. No, this was, this was fun, right?
Want this on the next agenda?
Yes, so let's put it on the next one. Peter's here. We can have some discussion on the next one when, when we're all here and then we go from there. We'll see what, what we think. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, good. Table it for now.
All right, the next item, then we'll move on to item three. The next item is a, it's a continuation of 292 Deming Road. Facilities Director, I don't know if he's online or if he's in person. There he is. Doug is here. This is with the demo and abatement of the house.
He was hoping he was online.
Our mobile home park. And so we, we had a change in, in vendor, I, I would say. So I'll turn it over to you, Doug.
Yes, thank you, Ryan. Mr. Mayor Council, a little, little, got a little excited over the summer. We had a very favorable pricing and after we triple-checked prior to or after the approval, it was discovered that not all the abatement. So worked with that contractor and some others to try to see if we could separate this and get the lowest pricing. And over the course of the summer, everybody's schedule and when they could actually do the work, no matter who we went with, we're back to, we have these two options here. The lowest one is before you tonight. The previously proved vendor wasn't able to amount any further under pricing. You know, certainly wonderful to work with. Hope to work in the future. Their abatement contractor, but the other discussions after we went out, the initial presentation, the highest for the, for the higher quote, we just, these were, one before you tonight is who has been in the mix all along, so. Correct, yeah. Yeah, we've worked with, who's before you tonight? We've worked with in the past, all the abatement. Their demolition contractor was a big part of the high school project. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly, you know, I'm not far with everybody else. Zarella's been wonderful. Their environmental abatement contractor was great. So we hope to work in the future with them. It's just, they weren't able to match the pricing on this time around, so.
All right, so we have a motion here. Folks, any questions? We're good? You good? Everybody? You good? Charlie, anything? No? You're good? Okay.
Move to rescind the previously approved proposal from Zarella demolition of East Berlin, Connecticut for the abatement and demolition of the caretaker's home at 292 Deming Road. Move to utilize state contract number 20PSX0154 for Hazpros Incorporated of West Hartford, Connecticut for the required abatement and their demolition subcontractor Bestech Incorporated of Arlington, Connecticut for the abatement and demolition of the caretaker's home at number 292 Deming Road in the amount of $50,640, which includes a 20% contingency.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, we'll move on. Agenda item number four. This is in regards to the Glen Street Bridge. We have our Public Works Director, Mike O'Hern, is, is with us online. And this, you may recall, we had done emergency repairs on this, but.
Yes, right. We did do some repairs, right?
Yes, but there's, there's more work to do and, and and Mike's gonna tell us about it, so.
All right.
Turn it over to Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening, guys. Yeah, I'll give you some of the story here. You guys might recall, back in 2021, you gave us funds to fill in the holes in the bottom of our corrugated medical, metal pipe, half of the bridge. And that actually worked out great. That stabilized the bridge condition. So we were able to get into the federal-local bridge program, which right now is a great deal. The previous program reimbursement was 80%. Right now, I mean, it's a federal program. The program has 80% match from the, from the feds and 20% is kicked in from the state. So we actually get 100% reimbursement. And this is for a full replacement of that bridge, which right now is just, it's stabilized by the emergency repairs, but we need to replace it. So in order to do that, we, even though we're gonna get all the money back, we have to put, as Kevin Delaney has told me, we have to actually appropriate the money so that we have the, the, the funds for the contractor and for the engineering inspection firm. So you'll see on page two how, how the money is being appropriated and transferred and obligated. We have two, round numbers, $2.1 million from our four-bridge project reimbursement, which was the same program. We got 80% back. That money was put back into the town's funds, so that's available for bridge work. We have $390,000 in an Edgewood Road Bridge project account. That bridge is not yet ready for construction, so we're gonna throw that into the mix. We have $284,000 in the Glen Street Bridge project account, which is available, obviously not enough. And from, we're gonna get state aid money of $893,000 for a total of $3.7 million. So, by the way, that, that cost estimate in my mind is conservative. That's by the DOT's engineers and it's all kinds of contingencies and add-ons and incidentals. So I think it's gonna be a lot less than that. But right now, moving this money around gives us the ability, and of course, this has to be approved by the Board of Finance, to contract with the contractor and engineering firm. We're ready, we're gonna be probably bidding at the end of this month. And it's, the state has put together the entire design on their nickel as well, so that was a nice gift as well. They've done 100% of the engineering with no cost to the town. So with your approval, we can put the money in place. Board of Finance will vote on it, I think, next week. And then we'll go to bid and have the money all set up for when the contract, the bids come back in and we contract it.
Any questions for Mike? Any questions?
Reach out.
Sounds good, right? We good?
You can reverse, absolutely.
Yeah, all right. So with that in mind, we'll go ahead and take the three motions here.
Move to approve a fiscal year 2026 appropriation of in four-bridge project reimbursements to Glen Street Bridge account pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Take a second on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? So moved.
Move to transfer $390,000 from the Edgewood Road Bridge project account to the Glen Street Bridge project account pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved. To three.
Move to obligate $893,000 in the municipal projects account to the Glen Street Bridge project pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So moved. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike. All right.
Mike.
For five.
All right, we'll move on. Timberland Golf Course. So this is a request for a bid waiver for material, for, for chemicals that are part of, that we do on an annual basis. Our Director of Golf is, is here with us online, so I'll turn it over to Saul.
Mr. Mayor Council, thank you for having me tonight.
Hey, Saul. How are you?
Good, thank you. I apologize. I should have had this part of my agenda from the last meeting. But we're looking for a bid waiver for Atlantic Golf. Is there a part of our early order program? They help us get insecticides and herbicides to keep the golf course healthy. And we're going over the 25K threshold. So we're asking to, for a bid waiver that will not exceed 30K or $30,000 to pay for some chemicals from the early order program.
Okay, thanks, Saul. Questions, comments?
Yes, I, I have comments on this.
Go ahead.
Why are we going for a bid waiver? Have you gone out and tried to get any other bids for these chemicals?
In the last meeting, I explained we looked into non-brand chemicals. But we don't get the same guarantee as far as effectiveness or productivity of the products. The pricing isn't that much of a difference, so when we get, do get the discounts from the early order program, we find it's, it's better to go with the on-brand products that we've been using in recent years to keep the golf course healthy.
Because, I mean, we did this again last year, waiving the bid, bids. And I mean, I'm sure there's other companies out there if you do the research and try to get better pricing and find out what the characteristics are, characteristics are of the chemicals.
The pricing we get, it's a, every course gets the same pricing for the chemicals. So they're acting, and they, they are a third company, but they act as, you know, the
Because, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen any documentation to substantiate that.
We started looking into off-brand products for spots, particular spots of the golf course, which are not the main spot. So for the main spots like fairways, roughs, greens, we've stuck to the on-brand products because they've been working really well in recent years.
But that's not answering my question. My question is, why haven't we gone out and got other bids and substantiated what the chemicals can do? I'm not seeing any bids. We're just going year to year and awarding contracts to companies without going out and formally bidding. So that takes me to this. Let me ask you this question, Ryan. Do we have a formal bid policy that the town has?
We have a purchasing, the town has a purchasing policy, yes it does, that this council did adopt, I believe, but most recently, I wanna say 2023.
Okay, I would like to request that you provide a copy of that to the council so we could look and see what the requirements are, because there's too many contracts being awarded. We're waiving, you know, this happened again last town council meeting with the snowplowing. Oh, we're just gonna give it to this company here. They doing good work. Everybody does good work. You know, I wanna see what the stipulation is, because if it calls out that we have to have three bids and then we go out and we approve a contract or an extension of a contract, then we're actually in violation of the, of the, of the policy of the town for going out and getting bids if it requires such based on a dollar amount.
So the policy does allow for the council to waive the bidding requirements, which is, which is how you, you are always in compliance with our purchasing policy. That's what we wanna make sure. And believe me, our, our finance department, as I did tell you all, just won again the GFOA award for excellence and, and, and as they have for, I think, every year for the past 20 or so years. So the point is, we take our purchasing policy very seriously. I, I will say, though, that I do share your concern. I think I will say, though, that I do share your concern. I think...
Because, well, Ryan, not to interrupt you, but I mean, last meeting where we talked about that, we awarded a contract or an extension of contract, and we didn't waive nothing. You know, we just voted on saying, okay, I mean, I voted against it, but we just went ahead and approved that. But there was no waiver request. We just extended the contract.
So the extension of the contract, where you can extend and...
I would like to see the written policies for what we have for the town and be sure we're in compliance. Because, I mean, we got another item coming up with a $75,000 pump.
Now, and so...
And I haven't seen, you know, we're just gonna go ahead and approve a $75,000 pump without seeing any other bids?
Well, this, you can talk about that then. I'll say, I do agree with you. I think that, looking at the number of bids that the council waives, I think that it's definitely worth discussing. I would just advise that this particular product isn't probably the one that I would personally recommend bidding out. And the reason for that, as Saul said, is it's the proprietary chemicals that this company has and the price. And Saul did explain at the last meeting that they've tried alternative products, and they're not as good. And so the reason for that is the reason why we're coming for the bid waiver on this particular one. So I do agree, you know, that's my personal opinion. I'm not a fan of bid waivers all the time. But in this case, I do feel as though this product is the product that would be necessary for Timberland Golf Course.
Can I ask a question to Saul? There's probably a timeframe that you want to have this application put down to. Is that correct?
Well, the, with the early order program, we get these chemicals earlier in the season, but they bill us now. So we have used it already on the golf course.
Okay. All right. I think going forward, and I think that we should get multiple bids on things, but I think under the circumstances, I agree with you, Ryan, I think we need to move forward with this and, you know, with this type of product. Absolutely. Thank you, Saul.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anything else? We're good? All right, so go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Atlantic Golf and Turf. Is there a part of the early order program for Timberland Chemicals not to exceed $30,000? Because this is in the best interest of the town.
Second thought.
Thank you. There's no other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Posed?
Abstention. I'll abstain.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. For six.
So number six, this is again the Timberland Golf Course. Now, this is some positive news, because after, if you may recall, we purchased a rotary mower, and there are the funds, wait, Saul, I'm sorry, we purchased a rotary mower, a leaf blower?
Oh, we were able to get the leaf collector at a lower price than expected, so we had leftover funds from that account. We're asking for a transfer of those funds to a rotary mower account. Assistant Director of Golf, Jerry Salvio, found a brand new rotary mower from Snow White Power, where he is getting source well pricing. It will just help the staff be a little more efficient rather than having to hand cut and hand pick, you know, grass clippings. This mower will be able to ride in those smaller spots where you can cut and pick, pick up the clippings all at one shot. We can get into these smaller spots with the bigger mower. So this rotary mower will help the staff be a little more efficient in those areas.
Thank you, Saul.
Any other questions, comments? We're good? All right, take a motion, Charlie.
Move to approve the transfer of $14,999 from the leaf collector account to the rotary mower account to purchase a new rotary mower with source well pricing.
Thank you. Second.
Second thought.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, we are doing a groundbreaking Friday at noon at Timberland for the bunker project, so if anyone can make it, that'd be great.
Thank you, Saul. Thank you, Saul.
Thank you. Have a good night.
See you there.
And I owe you some shovels.
Yes.
Ah, yes, shovel.
On the way.
Gotta have shovels.
Right there. So our next item, this is a tax abatement. And you may have seen, I'm sure you've probably seen, that Schaler Honda is expanding, and they're currently under construction. And part of the good news for the town of Berlin is that they're expanding into the town of Berlin. And so with that, that makes them eligible for the town's tax abatement policy for the part of the facility that will be in the town. And so I'll turn it over to Chris here. I know the Economic Development Commission has recommended adoption of this abatement.
So, yes, so we have had the parking lot of Schaler Honda forever, basically. The good news is about just shy of 7,000 square feet of the new building is in Berlin. They're spending about $2.5 million in Berlin. Good thing is, too, is, one, a couple taxes, two, they're eligible for five-year tax abatement. And the better news is, I could tell everybody we now have four car dealerships in Berlin. So excited about it. I've been working closely with Mr. Schaler, and we're also looking long-term at his other dealership as well. So the good thing is, too, is they've been very, very generous in efforts that we've done through our office. And so Economic Development had approved this and would ask you to do the same for a five-year tax abatement. 50, 40, 30, 20, 50, 40, 30, 20, 10, over the five years, excuse me.
Is our expanding the existing Schaler dealership over near the tire, it's Veterans Drive?
Yeah, no, what he's doing, basically, it's two things. One, he's putting an entirely new base on the dealership, which is what Honda asks for every like five to seven years, and they're also expanding it. So it's interesting, because in the middle of the dealership, you literally can walk from Britain to Berlin, and we joke in quite a bit about, do you do signs on each side, welcome to, thank you for visiting? It's kind of nice, because it is really gonna be very state-of-the-art, and I'm excited to have the investment in town.
Thank you.
That's good. Hey, Chris, what's the top edge of our abatement policy? No, not for this one, but just...
Our top edge is 12 and a half, no, $25 million is the top side.
And then how many years do we give that one?
That would be 10 years on commercial, 10 years on the apartments, and then we have 12 and a half. Then it goes down to 3 million, 1 million.
Right, goes down from there. Yeah, 25 is the top.
It's the, it's the over a million dollars, which is the five years.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right, folks, we... Any questions? Other questions?
Good thing.
All right, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve a tax abatement for Providence Realty LLC and Wheezy LLC for the construction of 6,700 square foot building in addition at One New Britton Road and 11 New Britton Road of 50% in year one, 40% in year two, 30% in year three, 20% in year four, 10% in year five, for the town's tax abatement policy.
Thank you. Second?
Second thought.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
All right. All right, Chris is here for the, thank you all. Chris is here for the next agenda item as well. This is more of a high-level discussion at this time on town-owned properties and potentially some opportunities that may exist with some of our assets in town. So turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Ryan. Yes, so in the past, Jim Mahoney, who now works with us on a very small basis, had put together a list of town-owned properties, and it's around 240 total properties.
Jeez.
And looking through and realizing that there may be opportunity. In fact, one of the attachments in here, a developer out of Bristol, who has actually purchased land and developed it in the city of Bristol, reached out to me and said, hey, we're interested in talking to you guys. This has not been something the town has done in the past. And really, today, the goal is to just kind of have a chat with you about it on whether or not you think it makes sense to at least take a look. I think at this point, I don't know how many properties of those might be viable, ones that we need. Again, we're talking about everything from Sage Park to schools, to Town Hall, to the library, but also to pieces of land we may have been donated as open space, or it may be things that we purchased for some reason or isn't being used. Really looking to kind of get your blessing to at least consider looking at it, is what it is. No real action tonight, but they had mentioned, at least in here, that there was a couple of properties that they would be very interested in talking to us about. So just from that letter itself, without any research, there's opportunity. And I think from my own perspective, Economic Development Director, not at least looking at it, doesn't make sense, because if there's things that potentially the private sector might want and we don't think we need it, then it's at least worth a discussion. Again, I'm not talking go crazy. It's just an open discussion tonight to get your thoughts on it.
It doesn't hurt to talk about it, Chris. I mean, you know, get information and come back and present it back to us. I mean, you know.
Certainly, I think that...
Yeah, of course. Why not?
Open space that, you know, we shouldn't be looking at that necessarily, but certainly take a look at maybe some of these other, you know, other addresses.
Absolutely. And I would love Attorney DiNofrio, just if he wants to say a couple of words. I know they work with a number of communities that have done this in the past, and just kind of hit his experience with it and kind of, if it's something we decide to do, that we have numerous options.
Every town approaches it differently. You know, some towns, they'll build an inventory of properties that they're interested in potentially acquiring for open space, as well as an inventory of properties that, for various reasons, they're interested in divesting and using the proceeds from the divestiture to purchase acquisition of other open space. Some towns identify properties based on a highest and best use analysis and prioritize those that are best positioned for development. And you could either identify through an RFQ what it is you're looking for the property to be developed as, if you know what the highest and best use is. If you're not really sure about a particular property and want to kind of see what the market has to say about it, you could do a request for expression of interest. If you have properties that you've identified as ripe for a particular type of development, you could go right to an RFP. You know, you've got the properties that Newport, of course, acquired and developed that were, you know, brownfields that were redeveloped over a long period of time. The town acquired title through, you know, foreclosures 17 years ago. But, you know, like Chris said, you have a pretty, for a small town, you have a pretty extensive inventory of properties. And identifying properties that may be ripe for development based on Chris's knowledge and the rest of the town staff's knowledge of interest in that property makes a lot of sense, you know? I mean, long-term, the only way that you can really manage the mill rate is through groundless growth. So to the extent that you have properties, you know, and it's a long process, because a lot of times, some municipalities, you know, go into it with all the best intentions, and then there's neighborhood outcry, and that kind of kills it. So, you know, having some kind of public discussion about what you may want to do with some of the prioritized properties makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Attorney. And you tell me if I'm mistaken here, but I believe as a town, if we go out for an RFQ or RFP, get 100 responses, we don't like any, we can just say no, because we're the town.
Absolutely.
So really, even the discussion itself doesn't put us in a position except that, looking for your blessing. And again, we'll come back with something more formal if you think this makes sense. I just wanted to kind of discuss it tonight, because, again, the letter itself, and Charlie's here as well. He's a gentleman from the group out of Bristol. They're very eager to try to do something. They see that there is opportunity in Berlin. And in my mind, there's no reason to, again, at least have the discussion, see where it goes. We'll come back with something more formal. Both Brian and myself, we'll be talking to Attorney DiNofrio. I'm maybe the best one.
You're gonna do grocery store, and I'll be very happy.
Believe me.
Other than stop and shop.
The problem is, the marketplace has more grocery store supply than demand. We need someone to go out of business first.
Yeah.
But don't think I haven't been thinking about it. There's a company called Lidl, L-I-D-L, and I'm trying to see if they have a distribution center anywhere near us.
All right. Appreciate that, Chris. Any other? We're good? Any other?
We're good.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
All right.
Oh, boy, the boys are all here.
Well, they're not. This is it.
Wow.
They're showing something.
Where's, uh... Level eight.
Ray is here with the Water Control Commission to talk about a request for a bid waiver for two active wells. And I'll turn it over. This is the Elton Road Well Field.
Correct. The two wells are two A and one B, circulating the information. And with regard to the bid waiver, I just wanted to let you know that SB Church and Elaine New England typically are the biggest well drillers in the New England region. They've both been bought over by Western Sampson Engineering. So SB Church is the original well drillers for these critical wells. What they do is they do gravel pack wells, and gravel pack wells occasionally. And since I've been here, we haven't done two A, but one B was done because it was relatively drilled back in 2016. So what happens, and you look, it develops finds. Those finds have to be removed. So what they do is they go back and put muriatic acid in there, clean it out, and do it, and redevelop the well. That's basically what it is to return some of the yield. Both wells can produce up to 450 gallons per minute. It's just shy of a billion gallons for the entire well field. And what I do is I use one, 350 gallons per minute, and one, 175. We blend the two wells. Well one B has 1.2 part-billion tricorethylene in the blending. Get none detect all the time. Since I've been here, we've had none detect on those. So that's the way we operate in that well field. And just coincidentally, that both had to be done at the same time. And this is also the first time that we've actually replaced the well pump on two A. We did replace the well pump back in 2022 for the submersible pump, which is well one B. If there's any questions to that.
Questions, folks? We good?
No, so this amount for $75,000 for a new pump?
No, that's for both redevelopment of both wells. The well pump is only 17,000. I just paid 35,000 for a well pump for, not the well pump, a pump for Demming Road.
It says a new pump for well two A in the amount of $75,000.
Well, it was written wrong, because if you look at the actual proposal from Western Sampson, there's a line item there for $17,000, and that's the total.
Well, because on the action here on this form that you have, it says...
For the combined activity, the entire redevelopment, including the well pump.
Oh, it doesn't say that. So is there anybody else that you can, that you've quoted for a new pump?
The pump was part of the entire process. No.
And these are the only...
Develop the well.
Yeah, Mark, I read it, the church to redevelop water supply wells, one being two A, and...
And to purchase a new pump for well two A in the amount of $75,000.
Well, that totals a little low. I mean, the way that's worded there, but it obviously is more than the pump when you read the beginning of the sentence, right? But I understand the end of it, and you think it... Yeah, yeah.
Redeveloping the two wells.
And purchase a pump.
This is 75,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And you never went out to bid to anybody else?
No.
Why?
SB Church is the only, I don't, the only pump, in fact, the only company that does drilling wells like this. I backed, back in the 70s, Governor Grasso appointed me to the well drilling board, so I'm very familiar with the well drillers in the state. And the only issue is, is that these are large yielding wells. This is not typical. Basically, only gravel pack wells that they do. They don't do smaller wells by any means. And so there's that much, and Lane New England was bought over, so there's nothing in this area particularly that you could go to bid with.
So basically, basically, then it's sole source?
Well, I guess you could call it that, yeah. They were the original drillers, and then we go to them all the time when we have a...
You know, that's not my question. My question was about going out to bid, and basically, they're the sole source.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? We good? Go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to waive the bidding requirements for SB Church to redevelop water supply wells.
Move to waive the bidding requirements for SB Church to redevelop water supply wells, number one B and two A at the Elton Road Well Field and purchase a new pump for well number two in the amount of $75,000. This isn't the best interest of the town.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
Yes. Can we just say that this 75, in, in the action or on the motion, that $75,000 is for the entire project?
It says that.
The way, the mayor even said, Charlie, at the begin, at the end there, it says, the way it's worded, it sounds like that $75,000 is for the, for the pump.
To redevelop water supply, blah, 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 and the pump.
So the total project is $75,000.
Correct. Yes. I mean, we voted the motion, but that's in the record, which you said too, Mark, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So $75,000. All right.
Yeah.
I'm good with that then.
All right. Did we, we voted, right? We didn't vote? All in favor? Aye. Posed? So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
All right. Agenda item number 10. I'll turn it over to our town clerk who is sporting.
Ah, yes, some pretty sporty gear. Look at this. There we go.
Town clerk's office, so I hope. Kate accepts cash.
Hey, you missed out. You should have done it with the whole audience. We could have made some sales. Somebody's selling.
Funny.
Yeah. You don't know what would happen. Yeah, no, no, no. But I mean, it would have been, yeah, it would have been good. We could have said that in the beginning. We should have said, I should have said it at the mayor's update, you know? Go see Kate. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, man, we should have done that.
But that hat is only $20, so.
Bargain.
And thank you. Ryan's been a huge supporter. I'm sorry?
I'm going to resist.
Making your goal.
Hey, hey, I use a, I use a local vendor, making sure it's a Berlin company.
There we go.
I am keeping the money here.
Keep the money in Berlin. There we go.
I believe that there's a percentage of the bid that goes towards a Berlin company or something.
Oh, there we go.
Yes. So the hats are $20 and the t-shirts are 15 and the sweatshirts are 25.
Oh, really? Wow, that's pretty reasonable. Yeah.
Because we have a steering committee that doesn't believe in like, they really want people to invest in this.
Yeah. Wow.
You know, that whole thing.
Absolutely.
And I will say this, I was at Celebrate Wally for this past weekend. Their shirts, sweatshirts are 45.
I was going to say, $25 for a sweatshirt, that's dirt cheap. How many you got? What do you got? We'll take them and, you know.
Going to make the profit.
Get a little, little action on the side, maybe. I don't know. For you, 35. Yeah, no problem.
Make the profit on volume.
Yes.
Instead of.
There we go. That's it.
Excellent. Way to go.
Excellent.
So I'm here right now is to ask for you to authorize the town manager to sign the contract for Give 250. And this is a statewide project that was done back in July. We weren't able to get the contract to the council in time to do this. So this time, we do have the contract. It's been reviewed. I think overall, we're okay with it. And if you approve it tonight, then during the Give 250, it would be October 21st, starting at 7:00 AM until October 31st at 7:00 PM. You can go online and sign up for, the minimum amount that you can donate is 10%, but then you can go as much as, you know, higher as you want. And I will say, there's a personal vendetta that Portland.
Oh, wow. What? Wow, here we go. What?
With July fundraising. And I really want to be Portland.
Oh, we need to.
I also want to be number one in everything.
Yes.
It was, I'll say, it was tough for me last time because Berlin couldn't compete in the July, in the July competition. And so I'm still on the, just like Berlin buzz, they have a Portland page and I saw all the posts about Portland had to beat West Hartford. Now I think Berlin's going to come for, for them.
Yeah.
Just remember, executive session is talking about your review tonight, too.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Yikes. I don't know.
In addition. Whatever.
And I'm very quiet for the record. I'm just like you said, very quiet.
You've been very quiet? What's, what happened? Oh, all right. Just, oh, it's the new hair, the new hair. Look at that. See?
Oh, I want to.
All right. Yes, Kate.
Point out is that there's prizes giving.
I saw that. What are the prizes? How do we win these prizes?
So we will.
Sell a bunch of sweatshirts for a good profit?
Well, there'd be more than $25, I'm sure. But anyway, anyway. So it is a great project. And then also what we are doing is Carrie Triska, who is the library director and my co-chair, has put together a letter that's been reviewed by Corporation Council for the businesses. And we hope to get that out. We have to massage some stuff, but we hope to get that out at the beginning of next week, that the businesses could either donate through Give 250 or they can just send a check to us and we'll be happy to do that. And I would like especially the mayor, if you would be willing to sign some of these letters.
Sure.
All right. And then if anybody, maybe, I don't know how to get this all out. But if there's businesses that you definitely deal with and we can also say, you know, Donna says please donate, then.
Yeah. Kate and I worked a little bit together and there was some people here in town. You know, if we personalize some of them and you know who they are, raise money to do what we want to do for this wonderful event, so.
And I just want to, I don't, I don't want to take up too much time because I know you're exhausted and everything like that. But we are going to be in the scarecrow contest.
Oh.
So vote for us. All right. We have the Give 250, which I said was October 27th through the 20, the 31st. There's going to be more so probably towards the spring, we have a scavenger hunt set up.
Oh, cool.
Chris Cody from the Theater Guild will be doing an abbreviation of 1776. And also we'll, we're going to have the kids involved and the Perilance Dance Studio, but all this. And we're going to do a play probably in April at the high school.
Well, good start.
The.
That's great.
I've talked to Charles about the Memorial Day Parade. We're going to be able to, of course, do a float or march in the parade and we'll sell merchandise at the Veterans Park. And the big thing that we're really working on is hopefully being able to do this Yankee Peddler Day. We looked at dates with the, I have a meeting, Carrie and I will be going to the next Lions Club meeting on the 27th to talk to them about using the fairgrounds. And we're hoping probably, it will probably be May 30th is probably going to be the date. All right. And well, that's going to be the big deal. And what I am really, it's, I'm really like, I don't know how to say this except for bended knee. We really need like a person to kind of chair this. I can get people who will work on subcommittees as far as talking to, we want to keep it local as much as possible with local crafters and vendors and also with like many of the people that sell the food at the Berlin Fair. I think the food at the fairground is the best. But you got the churches and you got the fire departments and that whole bit doing it. Hopefully they'll do it for this. That's where we're going with that.
And you're doing, where are you doing the Yankee Peddler Days?
What, I'm sorry?
Where are you going to do it?
Fairgrounds.
At the fair. You are doing it at the fair. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
All right. So it will, that will be the parking.
Yeah.
Because we can't do it on Main Street.
Yeah, it'd be too crowded, huh?
Now, I know that was done in the past.
It's the old days. That was the old days, right?
No, but just based upon the population now, I think that was done back in the seventies.
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
You take the train, huh?
Back in, yeah.
Take the train.
I think it was back in the horse and buggy days in the seventies, you know? We all had horses back then. That was a different, it was a different time. Yeah.
But the, also what we hope to do, and this is one reason why I want to raise money, is to do fireworks.
Oh, yeah.
At the end of the night. And that's $50,000.
That's 50,000 for the fireworks.
Unfortunately, we did talk about drones and that doesn't seem to be working out well. But what we will try very hard.
Those hoodies should be 45.
There's going to be more. So anyway, but then I want to give you some options of that.
Some sponsors.
I mean, we now have a Facebook page.
Oh.
Like it.
Cool.
If anybody who is on Facebook. And also on the town's website, I have under departments, I have America 250 Berlin. I didn't tell Ryan that. And. And that if you do type in America 250 Berlin, it does come to that webpage. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Lot of work.
Thank you, Kate.
Lot of work.
I just, yeah.
We do have a, right, a motion? We do have a motion. Mr. Charles?
Move to authorize the town manager to sign the Give 250 Connecticut Agreement on behalf of America 250 Berlin, which is operating under the town of Berlin. Funds raised will be used during our celebration of America 250 Berlin and placed in the account established by the town of Berlin.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
I just want to echo a big thank you to Kate and Carrie for, I mean, they're doing a ton.
Crush Portland. Crush Portland. Just kidding.
Included, but I just want to thank them. I was at the last meeting and the amount of work that goes.
Oh, my God. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sure. Just to get the clothes alone is probably not easy. But, you know, I mean, just to organize that and, you know, that's all, everything's, yeah. So we appreciate it, Kate.
I think everybody could be wearing their sweatshirt.
Yes. Yes. Going to need sweatshirts soon, I guess. So yes. Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move on. Agenda item 11. Now, this is one of the items that Attorney Kern has spoken about earlier in the meeting about the Lamentation Mountain Fire, the recovery that we've been trying to do as far as, as far as the land goes. And so we've made some progress working with CROG to identify the basis for planning and design and restoration. And so as Attorney Kern mentioned, there's a recreational trails grant that's available. It's estimated working, we have been working with Tyan Bond and the other municipalities of Middletown and Meriden. And it's looking like $160,000 is what's needed. And with a 20% match, we're hopeful that the 20% match would be split evenly. And so the request for funding today, we do have funding available for this, so Berlin would have a share in this. And so we would be the first ones to offer a match. And, and it is anticipated that Middletown will offer a match as well and, and then Meriden too. So Chris, do you have any?
Nope. I think you encompassed all of it. And yeah, it's, I mean, the entire project, about $100,000 and ours would just be a match of just under 14,000. And I think it's a good use of the funds because I know a lot of that property is in Berlin.
So I have a quick question. What are they, are they fixing existing trails? What are they doing with the money? I'm just.
I, I think it's going to be a combination of looking at the damage, looking at how to recreate trails and the like to kind of come up with an overall plan.
This is just a planning grant and, yeah.
Just for planning.
Just for planning. But if you look, the proposal that we have here, it, it talks about, there's a needs assessment that would be done, design, vision strategies, land acquisition opportunities, construction prioritization, and then maintenance and a management plan. So this is, this is all encompassing. And so we, we did hire Tyan Bond to design the scope. And then there, this is the next, this is the next phase of that, moving from a scope to a plan, a restoration plan.
So restoration, that, that's key in my opinion.
Has all the damage been assessed yet? Or are they still doing? I thought you were done. I apologize.
My question is, if this is a restoration more than an introduction of some new trails, because we've had some issues with residents regarding trails up in that area. So that's why I'm asking.
I think this will look at all of that, to be honest. This is, this is to come up with a comprehensive plan, a detailed plan that we'll then use for funding. So.
Make sure that we keep that in mind.
Yeah.
We've had some problems in the past.
Have heard about trails being mismarked and.
Yes, we've had issues there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mark or Charlie?
Mark.
Mark, you're first. You're next.
Are you done?
Yeah, I just said I'm finished.
I thought you were done before. I apologize then. You don't need to bark at me. Has all the damage been assessed up there? Or are they still in a phase of working it?
So I think the scope that they laid out has assessed the damage, but this is a much more in-depth. What we're looking for now is a much more in-depth look. That's why this is, this next phase is, is to really get in it and to assess not just the, the damage done, but the cost for restoration. So we, so we know when we go out to bid what we're exactly looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Will this study cover the state land here? There's 50 acres that are state parked in Berlin.
Good question.
Should that be included?
As far as I know, all the land, it's all the land that's in Berlin, Middletown and Meriden.
The last I knew, the state representative and Senator from Meriden wanted to give the property to another resident and confiscate it from the town of Berlin. Are we going to study the tax-free zone that was established for that family? Is that part of the program?
What is going on with that? Do we know?
I can give you a report on that because I actually got a, I reached out to the AG again today.
Okay.
And I guess according to them, they may be making some sort of a settlement. But nothing's in stone yet, although the last time I spoke with them, it was supposed to be, you know, decided what was going to happen this fall. So, yeah.
Well, a settlement would imply that they're going to release the land to someone else, which would take the right of access from our citizen.
Fine. Something along those lines. That, Kate, I'd be happy to share that email that I got.
Yes.
Just hoping this planning stage, they include that land because it's part of Berlin's heritage, you know?
It should be included. Yes.
Alan, anything else, Hook? We good for now? All right. What do we think? We got a motion here, right? What do we have?
Move to authorize the use of $13,663 from the Lamentation Mountain Disaster Recovery Account for use as a match to a state recreational trails grant for the Lamentation Mountain Area Master Plan.
Second on that.
Second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? It's so moved. Thank you. Number 12.
Right.
Hallelujah.
Number 12, this is an economic development item. This is for the town to be part of a, essentially, it's, it's almost like a pass through, I believe. And, and so we would have to apply for a grant on behalf of SOMAC, is the name of the company, Chris?
Yes.
And so I'll turn it over to Chris to discuss this.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. It's too bad Councilor Rosso is not here because I know this is something he asks about on a regular basis. This happens by the parcel across the street from Sherwood Falls.
Yeah, yeah.
We're able to have a sit down with SOMAC, which is actually one of the companies underneath the Carrier family, Beltman Company out of Farmington, Clean Bill, as well as a couple of members of the tenants association. It's been challenging in the past to get people to sit down and talk, various reasons. But we sat down, we kind of talked about it. They need to get a couple quarters of testing to be able to get financing. They already have some concept plans for 16 townhomes. We happen to be a member of Global Growth Partnership, which is through the Connecticut Valley Council of Governments. And essentially, the way it works is we have an annual fee to be a member. I'm on the board as well. And really what this is going to do is potentially give the developer and association a grant of potentially up to $23,000 minus a 10% match to do the assessment of the property.
I mean, that's interesting though. So when we approved those townhouses way back in ancient history and planning and zoning, there was never any talk of any kind of contamination there. Why, we think there is now, apparently? I know it was a factory, but, I mean, I know that, but.
Part of the issue is it has to do with PFAS, PFAS, with something that I believe is naturally occurring.
Yeah.
My understanding is DEEP has not actually given numbers to work with. So it's one of these things that if you have it, you're in trouble. And people can't really deal with that. And, and with that, they just want to feel comfortable with the PFAS part of it. So it's really something that when it was approved the first time, wasn't even in the nomenclature.
Okay, okay. Good. Because I never remember hearing any of that stuff.
And I mean, is there some minor things there? Yes, because it was industrial.
Sure.
Nothing huge, but at this point, because of the PFAS.
Yeah.
I mean, and really what happens is, so, application will go in through the Regional Growth Partnership, they essentially will send it out to seven or eight different companies they work with, they get quotes.
Yeah.
We, as a member of the board, maybe as a member of the board, will take a look at the quotes, decide on the best one, the good news is, we choose the best one for the project. Nothing to do with the amount of money, has to do with what's best for the project.
That's good.
Right now, it's just getting your.
Yeah.
Authorization to basically apply on their behalf, the good thing is too, is really the town is not involved at all, except that we're on the board, uh, doesn't cost us anything, and really, it's to try to move this development ahead.
Yeah, that's good, it'd be nice to put the townhomes there.
Owns the property now?
It is currently owned by, uh, CIL Development, uh, but it's a, it's basically, it's an, uh, LLC that doesn't really exist anymore. Um, situation, I was not part of the whole thing, the development rights were given to the Tenants Association, so really the values of the development rights. So, that's really what Carrier is going to be purchasing, the development rights at that point, from the Tenants Association, so.
They don't own it.
They, they don't, but really, the land is basically all but worthless at this point because of, it's in an LLC that doesn't exist, and it has contamination. So, until the contamination, put their arms around it, it, it's a very weird situation, to say the least.
We don't know whether it's contaminated or not at this point, no.
No, they, they've done some testing, um, and this is the last piece that they need, which is the PFAS piece, and they feel comfortable to go forward, but they just wanna make sure this is position that they can go forward with.
And CIL has no interest in that building anymore, Sherwood, they're completely.
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
I don't think they do, Charlie.
Think they were, they're out of it, but.
They're out of there, yeah.
Thank you.
They're out of there. Okay, uh, we have a motion, right? Ooh, what time is it, it's getting late, uh, uh, go ahead, Charlie.
Move to authorize the town manager and the Economic Development Department to apply for a brownfield assessment. Money is up to twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars through the Nagatuck Valley Council of Government and use the Regional Brownfield Partnership.
Thank you, second.
Second that.
Thank you, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
So much.
Alright, thank you, Chris, appreciate it. To town managers' report, Mr. Town Manager, what are we doing?
I'll, uh, I'll try to, try to be brief, that's why I passed out that quarterly update earlier.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Go into too much detail on that, but, but there's a lot of stuff, and I tr, we tried to condense it.
There is a. Bless you, bless you.
Uh, to read, so take a look at that.
There is a lot of stuff.
Just wanna give a quick YMCA update, they, it's official, they have all the documents that they need.
Yes.
And I just reached out to Don Rittman again yesterday, and, oh.
Me too.
You did too?
Yes.
And, so.
As su, as soon as his son is married this weekend, he's meeting with his engineer with the reports that we gave him, so, yeah, he seemed, uh, very happy that we got him the reports, and, uh, hopefully happy to move forward, so that's where we're at.
So, we'll have more news to share next time, but that's moving along.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, we touched on, I, I just wanna give a couple things, the Sage Park lights, you may recall, we're, we're redoing the lights, I wish, I wish Peter were here for that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the baseball, baseball and softball field.
Yeah, the baseball.
Here, they're being installed, so that's, that's working out.
That's great.
Well.
That's under, that's being worked right now?
Being worked, yes.
Thank you.
And the town hall roof, you may see that.
Yes, we see that, under construction, excellent.
Bless you.
Bless you.
So, uh, it's been, it's been fun at work the past few days, and.
Oh, yeah, a little noisy.
And, uh, early voting has be, or not early voting, absentee ballots are available now, and early voting will begin on October twentieth, so, for, uh, I don't know if you guys knew, but there's a municipal election coming up.
Nah, uh, we hear nothing about that out there either, nah, nothing online about it, nothing at all.
Action downstairs going to be completed before?
Yeah, and that's, my, yes, so the next point, so you may take a look on your way out if, if, you know, if it's not too late, but the, uh, we have that, that V and A suite's been reconfigured.
Yeah.
Where there's now going to be the early voting room, which will also serve as a conference room when early voting's not in session, as well as our, uh, suite for the Social Services Department, and so, uh, you know, thanks to, uh, the Facilities Department, Doug's guys have been doing, uh,
Yeah.
Awesome job to get that timeline hit, so we can make sure that we're ready for early voting, which we will be.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks nice, good, do, good design, it looks like, should, you know, be helpful for everybody in town hall.
You had a question on the Carriati property last time? Carabetta? Oh, was it Carabetta?
Carabetta.
It was an, okay, yeah, so we talked on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else I'm missing?
Hmm, no. Yeah. Talking settlement, that's never a good thing, um.
It might become taxable at least, huh?
Maybe, uh, but else, anything else, we're good?
I think we're, we're.
Good, thank you, appreciate it, thanks for passing that out, lot of, lot of stuff there, a lot of stuff happening in town, stuff, stuff's getting done, it's amazing. Alright, so special committee reports, uh, but, oh, yeah, your fire.
Fire committee.
Yes, yes.
Where, uh, this evening, and, um, made some progress, they're gonna realign, uh, what they consider an active fireman, to make the story short, and.
Okay.
Their participation in events will be rewarded, if it goes over four hours, they will get basically a double allotment, which is a very small amount, nowhere near what they deserve, but it looks to get a little more if it runs over four hours, and, uh, that, gonna try to bring that to the council for the next meeting.
Good, good, you said that, yeah.
The pension fund, we're gonna look at after this, we'll get this first part moving sooner.
You know, the thirty bucks, I was at a meeting with the, some of the mayors the other day, and like, Weathersfield's like, less than twenty or something, I mean, we're, yeah, they're really, they seem really low, and they're losing, well, it's probably why they can't recruit members, and they're losing members, yeah, which is sad, but.
Well, there's, there's other, um, payments if they.
Yeah.
Participate in special events, go to schools and teach, they get so much money.
Yeah.
It's a very long.
Yeah, no, it's good, but I'm just saying, our town seems to be above, uh, some others in the area, right? I don't know, Portland is above too?
Anybody that's a volunteer fireman, we're above Portland. Or above, but anybody that's a volunteer is not doing it for the money, it's.
No, 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 you're above Portland, they had to say that, um, but, but, no, no, they're not, but I mean, it's nice, we're, you know, thinking of more, you know, above Portland, yeah. Well, I mean, similar town, that's why I'm asking, it's okay. Alright, we're good, anyone else, council, uh, any, there was no other special committees, right, no? Council Communications, folks, what do we got, anything? Yes, yes, sir.
All right, copy that purchasing, uh, uh, purchasing document or policy, uh, for reviews, um, I guess we're, you know, prior councils will re- can review it, see exactly where we stand when it comes to times going out, you know, bids and quotes and what's required and how the town works.
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Very much.
Appreciate it.
Eric, I had is kind of minor, but, uh, the mayor and I have been to, uh, several, uh, ribbon cuttings, and we went to the big, the, uh.
Memorial?
Uh, not the memorial, but, uh, you, you reveal the, uh, at the church there, that, uh, uh, thing that they did. Remember that, that they revealed that, uh, thing that they painted at the church?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, we've been to several, several things, and, you know, again, uh, we're at the, uh, dedication for the bench, and, you know, Chris has, has also mentioned that, you know, like, he goes out, he's got a shirt, it's got Ber, the Berlin emblem on it, says, you know, economic developer. Uh, Mayor also thought it'd be a good idea that, you know, the town council members could get something with, uh, you know, the emblem, and, you know, so just as town council, so when you walk into places, they know who we are, just like here, you don't, you don't even have to go in.
We go.
Well, hi, I'm your town council, whatever, but, you know, going to all these ribbon cuttings and everything, we were at the artisans, uh.
Yeah, I've been a lot of.
Nobody, who the heck we were at first, and.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just something that, you know, shows who you are for representing the town.
Yeah, maybe we can wa, work on some design and get something for us, I don't know. Yeah.
A lot of, whatever we use for embroidery, I'm sure they got the layout of the town emblem, and, uh.
Yeah, I think the, one right in Kensington there, I think she does some of the town stuff, the lady there, what's the name of that one, right, by Dairy Queen, yes, American, yes. Yeah, we could look at that, we could see what we can do. Huh? That, that's her used, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also, it's not that expensive, but I'm sure that, you know, you get the size, people, and they want one, or if they go to these things, you know, I go when I have the availability.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, it's a good thing, so they know, you know, where you're from.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
I'd be willing to pay for it myself instead of the town doing it, I, I.
Could do that too, we could figure it out, maybe get some, get some prices and see. Yeah.
You know, we got the town represented.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we can maybe get some prices on it, just see how much they would cost for, I wouldn't think so.
What do you?
No, 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 it wouldn't be, he should, no, no.
A polo, not a polo.
Okay, well, it could be polos, but there could be other stuff too, yeah, yeah. What'd you do?
Your hat?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I, I, you know, uh, actually, a nice shirt would be nice too, for the council members and.
I'm trying to go for a leather jacket.
Leather jacket, okay, we, we could look at that too, um, leather jackets, leather, maybe some like, high leather boots to go with the leather jacket, maybe, I don't, I don't know.
So, we can, we can explore this.
Kate, what do you think?
Something that, yeah.
Yeah, she's very good.
So, why don't we do this, why don't, we'll send out an email to the council, and you can, you know, put your preference for what you're looking for, and then we'll, we'll get prices.
We're not looking to spend a lot of money, it's just, you know, identification, when you go, go out there, it's nice to walk into a place, they know who you are. You know, cuz you walk into some of these places, they say, can I help you?
Yeah.
You know, and yourself included too, right, the town manager.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would, I would purchase something that's sitting, yeah, absolutely.
If you wanna hide for that event, you don't wear it, I mean, that's what you do, you kinda stand in the back without the shirt on, you know, if you wanted them to know you're there, you put the shirt on. Okay, yeah, could, could see what we got. Okay, any, anyone else, we good?
I just wanna make a quick apology for wasting the council's time over my remarks that were misunderstood.
Ah, Charlie, it's alright.
I'm sorry.
Nah.
Nah, I'm fascinated that the folks that are so enamored with free speech wanna stifle mine, we'll leave it at that, thank you.
Yes, interesting, the rights of a few don't matter either, apparently, from what I heard tonight, I don't know that either, that's somehow. I guess we shouldn't, but it's hard when you, you know, it's very difficult, and, uh, yeah, I guess you're right. Okay, well, acceptance of minutes, I guess we're here.
Make a motion, we accept a minutes as presented.
Thank you, second, any other, any comments or questions?
Yes, one.
Oh, yes, sir.
One comment on the, uh, last, uh, topic there, uh, you got, uh, vote being five to zero, motion carried, it was five to two.
Where was it, where was that at?
Very la, on the very last, uh.
At the back?
Item, on the back, right before appointments.
Oh, let's see.
Does, uh, vote being five to zero, motion carried, it was five to two, cuz there was two that were opposed.
On the, uh, which?
This is on page four.
Four, the last motion there?
Last motion by, right before appointments, says those voting in favor, there were five that voted for.
There's two opposed.
That are opposed, it says vote being five zero, it should be five to two.
Why were we opposed, why, why were you guys, why were you opposed to that, I forgot, Mark?
Because that was just, just, it didn't go off the bid, and it just approved extending the contract without going out to anybody else.
Gotcha.
And then, um, Mike basically said, well, I'll get you a bid next year, well, that, that doesn't cut it with me.
Okay, no, I, I get it, no, that's fine, okay, yeah, no, I get it, yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, so we'll fix, may, fix that, and, uh, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, uh.
So, take the motion with the adjustments, we'll be good.
Yes, we'll make that adjustment, make sure that reflects, it's just, it's reflected above it, so just make sure it's five to two, Kate, we know, you know, yes, yes.
I'll correct that.
Yes, what do we do? Oh, okay, okay.
We'll be done within this minute.
Yeah.
These minutes.
Okay.
Right, so, there's obviously an issue there, it is obvious.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure that it's, um, reflected in the set of minutes.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we're good, okay. So, executive session, right? So, make a motion to go on executive session.
Move, we go into executive session for pending litigations, yeah, I read all of this, Kate.
Yeah, so.
So, no.
Yes, General Statute, section one dash two hundred six B, strategy negotiations with respect to pending claims, pending litigations. Kensington Water Fire District, Kensington and Worthington Fire Districts, also discussion of settlement negotiations with respect to pending litigation, one twenty-eight LLC tax appeal. And personal matter, personnel matters, connect with General Statute one dash two hundred six A, concerning the appointment, employment performance evaluation of a public employee, town managers' evaluation.
If you put, Charlie, for the, uh, water control, if Kensington Worthington Fire District invited in, it's going to be Jim Horvath and Leah Mitchell, and Dave Impresen. Okay, um, the floor.
Laurel.
Laurel, thank you.
You have Ray too? You have Ray, right?
Right.
Yes, but, oh, yeah, and Ray, thank you, that's good, we're very good together, and then Ray, and then.
And the piece of pipe is invited in too, that's always invited in.
The town manager and corporate.
Yes. So, so, so included, yes, as moved.
Cuz I have a whole different test on March.
Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved, okay, we will, uh, just take a moment to shut, shut the doors and, uh, gotta shut up the, yes, that's, that's fine, yeah, and we'll take a quick break, it's been a long evening, but productive, I think, very productive, it's all good. That's good, oh, I think we're pretty good.